Given that the time is 6:30 PM on Monday, September 23rd, 2019, the public forum is called to order. I also want to make note that we have a forum of the council here, so the council is officially called to order as well. The purpose of this meeting is to talk about two items related to the supplemental budget. The forum will be followed by a regular council meeting. So first of all, Section 5.6 requires that whenever there's a supplemental budget and other appropriations in this case, that the town manager submits to the town council, a request must therefore be received by the Finance Committee. It has to be published on the town bulletin board for a minimum of 10 days, and the town council holds a public forum unless these are considered supplemental funds are needed immediately in the case of a declared emergency. In addition to that, it's important to note that the definition of a public forum shall mean a meeting during which more than one-half of the meeting time on the agenda is devoted to public comment. So the purpose of this public forum is to hear presentations and engage in public comment on the proposed reconstruction and equipping of the Centennial Water Treatment Plant and the proposed purchase of the Hickory Ridge Golf Club land. Neither of these have been voted on by the council. So we will begin with a presentation on each, then we will have public comment on each, taking the Centennial Water Treatment Plant first and then Hickory Ridge second. So we'll begin with a presentation. I believe Superintendent Guilford Mauring. Guilford Mauring, I can't believe I just did that. How are you?
Good evening. How are you doing? I actually found my name tag, so I have it. So... I'm also... So I've been here several nights now as Finance Committee and as Town Council, and I've told you a lot of stuff, and it's taken a lot of time, and you've seen it on the reviews of the programs and everything. So I basically just came up with a short summary to go over for tonight. So this is our water system. We have a registration of 3.34, a permit of 1.2, and we're allowed to take 4.55. That's our withdrawal allowance we have from Mass DEP, just to remind you. We can't go over that. These are our sources again. And you can see that our wells give us a 4.4, which is almost the total we're required to withdraw by Mass DEP. We don't use well six. And then we have three MGD from the two surface water supplies, Atkins and the Centennial facility. It's just, I'll come back any of you have questions. And then again, trying to... That's not working. So again, the wells are down here in the bottom, and this color here is a condition index of five, which is bad. One is good, five is bad. The wells are down here, all six wells we have. The Pelham Reservoir is in this blue area, which is good. It's a one. Atkins is in this little lighter blue, which is not a one, it's a two. It's a little worse than the one, but they're in good condition. So all our water now, right now, is coming out of three pots. What we've been trying to do, and what was recommended by Tate and Howard Study, was automate well four, which is called Baby Carriage as well. That's the treatment plant. That gives us a better supply and better water from the Lawrence Swamp area. Upgrade Centennial, which will keep the Pelham Reservoir surface supply going, and then develop a well in Sunderland. And then on the maps, if you see, if we go into Sunderland or even to Hadley, you're in a little better area. It's not the best in Sunderland. There's this little spot here in Hadley, which is good, which is also on the eastern side of Amherst. So we've been working on all three of those, and what we've been talking about the most is the fact that we're ready to move forward with Centennial. We're almost done with the modifications, the Baby Carriage. Those will be done probably in February of this, February of next year. And we've been working on the well in the northwestern side of town, and there'll probably be an update on that in the near future, probably in two or three months. Any questions?
We'll ask for questions later. Is there anything else you're going to show us tonight?
No, not unless you specifically ask for it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions from the council at this time? Since we've been through this a couple times. Thank you. We'll wait till public comment. Please don't go away. I mean, you can go back, but don't go away. Don't leave the room. Excuse me? No, we're going to do the next presentation, and then we're going to do public comment on both. Okay? Thank you. Hickory Ridge. David. I'm sorry. And Jeff?
Thank you. Dave Zomek, Assistant Town Manager. I'm joined by Jeff Gravitz, our Economic Development Director. And as Mr. Mauring said a few minutes ago, I know the council has seen a presentation on this before, but we did put together a few slides, and we'd like to quickly run through those. We know we're under a time limit, so we'll move fast. So as has been reported, we have for over a year been in discussions with the owners of Hickory Ridge Golf Course, which is about 150-acre piece of property in South Amherst off of West Pomeroy Lane, about the possibility of purchasing the golf course. The owners of the golf course are very committed to doing a solar project on the property, and that will be about 26 acres of the total of the 150. I want to make this clear tonight, that this is more than an open space project. We firmly believe there are many elements to this project that we think will bring benefits to the residents of Amherst. It is land conservation. It's green, sustainable source of energy. We're hoping to bring access to trails, open space, to the village center down at Pomeroy Lane for low and moderate income residents who live north of the course up on East Hadley Road, and the potential for economic development or other uses on the developable portions of the property. Before you write on the screen now is a rough breakdown of the property, showing in dark gray 26 acres of solar. In kind of a tan color along the river is the required mitigation for rare species habitat that the developer of solar will need to do. And perhaps Jeff can show you up on the front edge on West Pomeroy Lane, an area where the clubhouse is, and the parking area, which is a large, about 100-car parking area, which we believe has the most potential for reuse. Next slide. We've successfully negotiated a purchase and sale agreement that the town manager has signed for $520,000. We do acknowledge that there are a number of contingencies in that purchase and sale agreement, clearly appropriation of the funds from the town council. Just an update, we will be before the Finance Committee. That date has changed from tomorrow to, I believe, October 8th. So for those people who are interested in being at that discussion, it'll be at your next meeting, the Finance Committee's next meeting.
Correct.
A major contingency in that purchase and sale agreement is that the solar developer needs to get into the SMART program, and we're awaiting word on that. I'll turn it over to Jeff from here.
So about the project, the town would purchase the entire parcel, 149 acres. The seller would retain an easement for the 26.6 acres for solar. Dave talked about the habitat mitigation, a little bit more details. It's a 20-year term with up to four, five-year extensions, so up to 40 years total. And the town would do sort of a master planning process to determine what could actually be developed and what parts of the property should be conserved. As Dan, Dave mentioned, potential uses include conservation land, trails to connect the neighborhoods to the north, to the village center in South Amherst, and potential reuse of the existing buildings or parking lot area, flex space, affordable housing, senior center, parcel off lots to sell to individual house lots. And then, the whole parcel was valued, was appraised at $915,000. As Dave mentioned, $520,000 was the purchase and sale agreement, so a bargain sale of CPA has already voted to appropriate $200,000 for this project for conservation purposes. Existing funds from the sale of real estate, $114,000, so $206,000 left for the purchase and sale. And then we estimate about $100,000 in additional costs over the first year, two years, to include things like insurance on the buildings, maintenance, utilities, legal costs, a survey of the property, wetlands delineation, environmental testing, those types of things. Currently, the property pays about $30,000 a year in taxes, which is reduced because it is a recreational area. Estimated pilots from year one are about $40,000, and in year 20 would be about $63,700.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Again, don't leave the room. But I am going to ask you to step back because we'll be asking people who wish to make public comment to come forward. You use the mics. Make sure the green light is on. You state your name and where you live. And we're going to do this in a manner that goes in the order in which we've done the presentations. So we're going to start with people who would like to make public comment on the Centennial Water Treatment Facility. After we're done with that, we'll move on to those people who would like to make comment on the Hickory Ridge Golf Course land purchase. I want to also stress that this public comment is restricted to the purpose of this forum. When we have our regular meeting, as soon as this is over, there'll be another period of public comment as well. During the public comment, we ask that you keep your comments to no more than three minutes, and you may, however, have some questions. And we have interpreted the rules of the charter to allow us to have that dialogue. And if there is a way to give answers to your questions, we will. And if not, we will try to find out the answers at another time and post those responses. So may I see a show of hands of those people who would like to make public comment regarding the Centennial Water Treatment Facility? Please come forward, the woman here right behind David.
My name is Sarah Surva.
Please move to the mic.
I'm short. I live on Rosemary Lane in Amherst. And I just had a couple of questions. Ms. Henneke had shared the report from Tate, TADA, Tate and Howard with me, so I had some questions from that report. And some of them come from their recommendations. They say, "We recommend first maximizing existing groundwater sources, which include using well number four consistently." And then they additionally say, "The town can optimize their current groundwater sources in a more cost and time efficient manner than developing a new source or upgrading the Centennial Water Treatment Plant to meet the growing demand." I also had copied something from page 24 where they talk about upgrading well five. And I watched the Finance Committee meeting, and at that meeting, Mr. Mauring had said that there was a permitting process involved with getting well five up and going. And what they said, "The process to replace well number five would require site investigations, permitting with the Mass DEP and Local Conservation Commission, design and well construction as outlined below." And then they said, "The estimated cost for test well exploration, survey services, and completion of a proposal for replacement well, including a pump test proposal, is $40,000. This includes engineering, permitting, installation, and contingency." And my understanding from the conversation at the Finance Committee was that that has not been done. So I'm not sure why, number one, we're not first looking at that. That's the recommendation of the consultants. The recommendation of the consultants was that we not upgrade Centennial unless we've explored these other options. The other concern I had about upgrading Centennial is that on page 37, they talk about it as having, the Pelham Reservoir is having poor raw water quality. I'm not an engineer. I do not know whether or not you can take a poor raw product and turn it into a good product. But it seems to me if you're going to be spending $11 million, it makes sense to ensure that you have, you're going to have a good product at the end. Let me see if there's anything else. Again, the cost. The Finance Committee talked about the cost being approximately $700,000 for that, just the engineering study on upgrading Centennial. And that would increase water rates by about 3.5%. There are a lot of expenses, as the Finance Committee and the Town Council knows. There are a lot of capital projects. For us to put this on people's water bill, increase people's water bill, it doesn't matter if it's coming out of your pocket as a tax or a utility bill. It's still, most of us have limited budgets, have fixed budgets. Taxes go up, water bills go up. It's not like we have separate accounts we can draw from. Am I reaching my three minutes?
Yes.
I can see you looking at the clock. All right. The last thing I'll say is that Mr. Steinberg had said something at the Finance Committee, at the end of the Finance Committee meeting, that the town has put a lot of money into protecting the watershed area around the Pelham Reservoir. And I understand from what Mr. Mauring said, that there's five years on that building, and then we have to go through the permitting process all over again. But there's an economic term called a sunk cost fallacy, which is that because we put a lot of money into something, we need to continue to put money into it. And I don't think saying, "Well, we put all this money into the reservoir, watershed," is adequate to continue putting money into it. That's all I'll say.
Guilford, would you like to come forward? Yes. Oh, yes. Please sign in and give us all of the information required. You want to go back to your PowerPoint presentation? Okay.
So first of all... Wrong side. First of all, well five, if we look at what well five is actually able to produce now, well five is certified for half a million gallons of water. Half a million. Wells three, which is a much larger well and is a bigger piece of the aquifer, actually is certified for 1.4. So if we actually do not do anything with Centennial, in five years, we'll lose 1.5 million gallons of capability to withdraw water. That's already certified. All we have to do is get the plant up and running again. We keep the 1.5. Well five is down here in the very bottom of the aquifer. It's not been developed in the past because it's been in a little pocket that when we run it, it doesn't run efficiently. They talk about it in the report, that it says we develop it better, it'll run more efficiently, but we're not quite that sure. This side of the aquifer is all there is. There's no other water coming in. Well four, well three, well ones, one and two are more in the center of the aquifer. They get a lot more watershed area flowing into it, and there's more groundwater supplying the well itself. We really don't think well five is going to give us much more. And even though it is cheaper to do it, we don't think we're going to get more than a half a million gallons. It's also, as we talked about, the three bowls we're drawing from. Lawrence Swamp, where the wells are, is one bowl, and we're already permitted to withdraw 4.4 million gallons a day. Pelham Reservoir is one bowl. We're allowed to draw 1.5 million gallons per day. Atkins is another bowl. So we have our water now divided among three bowls. If we actually don't do anything with that Centennial, we'll lose one of the bowls in five years. We'll only have two places to draw from. What's in the report also is a section on the surface wa, excuse me, the Sustainable Water Management Initiative. We call it SWIMMY, Sustainable Water Management Initiative. We would have to go through that process to permit any new source. We're not quite sure how that is going to work because the state hasn't actually permitted a source under those new requirements. So when you talk about all you need is DEP approval, it's a little fuzzy right now what truly is DEP approval. We've been hitting on things that we know the outcome will be if we do it. Upgrading well four and Baby Carriage, we knew that was a solid hit. We keep that well going, 1.4 million gallons a day. We knew that if we do Centennial, 1.5. All we need to do is upgrade it. So we've been concentrating on things we know more about, and yes, it does cost more, but we know more about it. Poor water quality at Centennial is actually only during the last two, well, last two months of the summer. So it's July and August when the water quality is the poorest, and that's because of the thunderstorms that usually come through in the summer. There are much smaller watershed, and when you have a big thunderstorm, it stirs up the little bowl, the little reservoirs, and causes the water quality to get poor. August and September is usually when Centennial is shut off, when we first started this process of running the plants. And well four was brought online and only run in August and September because that's when the students were coming back. So water quality in Pelham is not poor all 12 months of the year. During 10 months of the year, you get very high-quality water from it. It's just during the summer when you have flashy rainstorms that it can get stirred up. Centennial gets stirred up, not Centennial, Atkins gets stirred up sometimes as well during bigger storms. When we've had tropical storms come through, we've actually had to turn Atkins off because the water gets stirred up so much. So I think I've answered both the questions.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
We'd like to give other people an opportunity. If we have more time later, yes. Thank you. Additional comments? Sir?
I'm Lyons Witten, 120 Puppet Hill Road. I'm also the Chair of the Water Supply Protection Committee for, I don't know, at least the last 10 years. I have three major areas that I'd like to focus on with my comments tonight. First is, has to do with sustainability. From the town's point of view, having three source areas within the town to withdraw water is far better than two, certainly far better than one. And the watershed where Centennial operates is the area with the best water quality overall, the least stressed of the areas in town, and that becomes very important when SWIMMY is taken into account, the Sustainable Water Management Initiative that's coming down from DEP. The Water Supply Protection Committee and the Water Department have been looking very carefully at what SWIMMY, what impact SWIMMY is going to have on our water supply and our ability to both operate the existing supplies that we have and trying to second-guess what that's going to do to permitting in the future. And we're not terribly optimistic about that. We did participate, the town participated in a beta project, I guess you'd call it, with the state where we looked at, we did an overview of the town from a SWIMMY perspective to try to get an idea of how DEP was interpreting their proposed regulations back when they were proposed. It wasn't very favorable to the town. That's all I will say about it. So the point is, if Centennial goes offline and we decide we need to put a new well in Sunderland, or we reverse our decision and decide that Centennial is the way we want to go, if we have to go back through the Water Management Act permitting process under SWIMMY, it's going to be more challenging than the approval processes we've done in the past. So from a sustainability point of view, the Water Supply Protection Committee is in favor of continuing along this line. We would like to remind the council that substantial investments have been made in the past, both to build Centennial, to extend the sewer line. It's been $460,000 worth of land purchases for water supply protection within that watershed in the last three or four years. And we're cognizant of the five-year window for getting Centennial back online, one of which has already passed, so there are four years left. And we'd simply like to extend our recommendation that the town continue with the engineering design necessary to upgrade Centennial. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and thank you for the work of your committee. Are there additional comments? Sir?
Chris Hockman of Pelham, the location where the reservoirs are and the water treatment plant. I'd like to begin by saying it would be a shame to not utilize that fantastic water resource and lose it for the town Amherst. That said, of note, the 2010 report quoted in the 2017 report said paragraph three, table 5.3, was for the construction of the sewer connection, item 19, with a 2010 estimated cost of $1,720,000, including engineering and contingencies. That 2017 TADA report goes on to state, prior to the 2015 report, the sewer recommended in the 2010 report was constructed, hence table 5.3 in the previous 2010 report was eliminated. The 2017 TADA report continues with the statement that TNH cannot make a single recommendation at this time, a single recommendation at this time, due to the need for the town to consider several factors, the first being allowable sewer flow rates and sewer charges, if any, for the disposal of filter, backwash, waste, and/or DAF sludge. This leads me to the question, has the sewer system under Pelham Road in Amherst, the section that in that $1.7 million sewer extension, that section that the $1.7 million upgrade under Amherst Road ties to, has that been upgraded to handle the possible 20,000 gallons of filtration wastewater that a newly designed Centennial plant might create daily, depending on the chosen design? That was a question I had. I haven't been able to figure that out.
Thank you.
And then my second question was, what impacts to the Pelham community in which the project is planned are anticipated in reports to date? And what opportunity do the neighbors of the proposed new water treatment plant have to influence the design and building process, given that they are not Amherst citizens?
Thank you. Guilford, do you have anything to add to that particular set of questions?
So as far as the sewer flow goes, we've come up with a methodology. There is two little bottlenecks in Amherst on Pelham Road for sewer flow, and we expected them to come up immediately upon installing the sewer system and having people tie into it. It did not happen. We've been monitoring it quite well. So we don't really have any immediate need to upgrade those two sections. We upgraded a third section and made it larger, and that seems to be clearing the flow, it's handling the flow quite well. So what we came up with is also another method to operate the treatment plant. So as we operate the plant, when we do back washes, we store the water on-site, and then we slowly release it into the sewer. And that allows us to actually not increase the flow in the sewer line. So it's an operational solution to the fact that it may be a problem... line. So it's an operational solution to the fact that there may be a problem with the sewer line, but right now there is not any issue with the sewer line handling the flow or any of the proposed flow we have. But we do have an operational setup for handling it as we operate the plant if something comes up. That's how the sewer flow will go. The issue about permitting and what do the people of Pelham get to say in how the plant looks like, we know we have to go through the same building permit and site plan review process in Pelham that we do here in Amherst. I don't think they have a design review board, but we will have to go through their cons comm. We will have to go through their planning board and all that's—building commissioner as well, to go through the whole siding of the building and the process. We hope to have a nicer building than they have now. They just have a nice green metal building right now on the side of the road. Hopefully it'll be a little bit better, and we'll be able to actually set it back a little more from the road and have some screening. That's our goal personally. So there's been a few cars that have slid up into the plant a few times, I've been told, over the years. So we do want to move back from the road a bit. And that's about—I guess that's it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about Centennial? I'd like to give a chance to other people that have my type of questions. The woman that's sitting behind David, did you have any further questions? Please come forward.
I know that Mr. Warren had said that well five would only give 0.5 million gallons a day, I believe, but the town is approved for drawing—excuse me.
Sorry. The town is approved for drawing, I think it's 4.4 or 4.5—4.4 million gallons a day, which is that what Tate and Howard said, which could be increased to 4.93. So I think we could use more groundwater. We could take more water from the wells than we currently are. And the other thing I wanted to say was that the—according to Tate and Howard, replacing well five would lead to an additional 182.5 million gallons a year, which is the same amount that they estimate upgrading Centennial would need to. And the cost of upgrading well five is only $410,000. So to me, it just makes sense to explore the cheaper alternative, and I understand the clock is ticking, but maybe we could expedite exploring the cheaper alternative, and then if it didn't work out, we'd still have three years to look at upgrading Centennial.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments? We'd like to move on to Hickory Ridge. Is that regarding Hickory Ridge, sir? Okay. All right. We're going to move on to Hickory Ridge, and please come forward.
My name is Tom Joyce.
Is the light on?
Green light's on.
Thank you.
You're not close enough. My name is Tom Joyce, 1119 Alisson Drive in Amherst. I've been a member of Hickory Ridge Golf Course. I know the property quite well. And I read the minutes of the last meeting, and it seemed to be a perception that there were a number of existing car paths would be available immediately for public use should we purchase this property. And I think that's wrong. Most of the car paths on the golf course are in the seven-third of the property. That's the part that floods several times a year. It has very few car paths in relationship to other golf courses. It's one thing about the property has always been very nice like that. The paths mostly run east to west, not the north and south, very little north and south. A little bit off beginning of the golf course, and that's about it. The residents of the Boulders and South Point would—it would have to be a pretty lengthy car path built for that purpose. And the car path would then have to travel through the flooded area of the golf course. Now, this has been very dry summer, but last winter and before, it usually floods three or four times in the summer and sometimes four or five times in the winter. And when it floods in the winter, the water doesn't drain off. In the summer, it will drain off in about three days. The course will be unavailable for play for about three days. In the winter, two to six weeks, sometimes a lot longer. Then you have a snowfall on top of the water that's falling that's turned to ice. It's treacherous. I don't know how it's going to be available to the public during that time. So I think it's a very limited opportunity for public use, is basically what I'm getting at. The property—years ago, I played golf almost every evening with Bill Robinson, who was one of the co-owners of the golf course and co-designer of the course. He basically said that they built the golf course because it has one—that land is available for one use and one use only as a golf course. I looked at the proposal, and I saw that possible building lots—I don't know where you would put building lots there—that wouldn't be in a location where you'd be able to get to when it was flooded. You'd have—it's few lots out in the far edges, few areas on the far edges that you might be able to put a building up there that wouldn't be unavailable—I mean, that wouldn't be, you know, rejected because of the water flow. But there'd be a number of times during the year you couldn't get to it. Emergency vehicles couldn't get to it. This is a pretty significant discussion with the Conservation Commission when plans were being presented, as for how, you know—if there was maintenance work being done on the solar panel, how was—how were emergency vehicles going to be able to access that property? I have a question about the clubhouse. I'm concerned for its uses. It seems kind of vague in the presentation. Is it going to sit empty? I live on—like I say, I live in up in Amherst Woods, and I drive on Station Road all the time, and we—the town own a horse farm that's basically in disrepair. It looks awful. We haven't done anything with it. The last lesser bailed out when the bridge went out. And I've been driving by it every day, just shaking my head, saying, "This thing is awful. We own it. We should be doing something about it." Either tear down the corral, fix up the property, do something. But I'm a little bit worried about the clubhouse, what's going to happen there. The best use for it is what Greenfield did with their clubhouse, and that's lease out the property to a restaurant owner, someone who could open a restaurant there, and collect the taxes off the—what—the restaurant taxes that would be generated. I don't—I can't vision it being useful as a senior center. I don't think that's—it's so far out of the center of town. I don't know if there's any chance of finding out if there were specific plans for that property. And there are three other maintenance buildings there, and my question, what are they going to be used for? I haven't seen enough in this proposal. I don't know that it makes sense right now to do this. I don't think there should be any kind of urgency. I'm taking a vote to do this. I know what the owners are doing. I know what they're talking about. I've heard the discussions, and I just—I think that the town just doesn't need to act very quickly on this. Let's get some more definite plans before we move forward with it.
Thank you for your comment. David, is there any part of that that either you or Jeff would like to respond to? I think particularly the area that would be considered for the clubhouse and access would be the two issues.
Sure. So we appreciate all of the comments of the previous speaker. I think on paths and the cart paths, I don't think we ever represented that the entire property was accessible via cart paths. We simply said there are a number of long cart paths that crisscross the property. We fully accept that some—sometimes of the year, this property may be not accessible due to flooding, but frankly, that's very consistent with many of our conservation areas throughout town, which are along the Fort River, the Mill River, and their tributaries. So if the property wasn't accessible in certain parts of the year, that's simply nature doing its thing in a floodplain. So we wouldn't really fight that battle. We do believe that fairly inexpensively, we can make connections to residents to the north in the apartment complexes off of East Hadley Road. And not all of the trails—proposed trails—would be crushed stone or cart paths. They simply could be woodchipped, et cetera. Some parts of the course could be more accessible than others. So I think that's an answer to the first part. In terms of buildable land, again, Jeff and I have referred repeatedly—and we'll talk more at the October 8 FinCom meeting—about a master plan. We really do need to go more in-depth, but to the previous speaker's comment, it's a little early to do that. We have a purchase and sale agreement with many contingencies. We will be before the Finance Committee in early October, hopefully seeking a recommendation back to you to move forward with the purchase if those contingencies can be met. And we will come to the Finance Committee with more specifics on reuse of the property. We have no doubt that the clubhouse area and the parking lot can be either—as the earlier—previous speaker said—it could be leased out, or, to be perfectly frank, the clubhouse could be demolished. It may not be the highest and best use for the property, and the town, through an RFP process or other process, could decide to demolish it and use that available, buildable land for some other purpose, be it habitat houses, be it affordable housing, or some other economic development venture. So we—it's still a little early to go into detail on that, but we'll have more for you at the October 8 meeting. So the master plan for the site would be very important.
Thank you. Additional public comment on Hickory Ridge, sir?
I'm Bruce Stedman. I live at 20 Mount Holyoke Drive. I'm here as a resident and also as a member of the new Fort River Butterhead Association, and also the Executive Director of the Conway School of Landscape Design, where we have a fair amount of history and experience with doing this kind of thing. In all three of those ways, I'd strongly encourage you to purchase this property and then do a in-depth master plan that would involve significant public engagement, public ideas and participation to address the kinds of things that the first speaker brought to your attention. So I hear that there is a deliberative, considered process about the timing, and I—so whether it's too soon or too late, I don't know, but it feels like you're taking very careful deliberative steps to think through the process. But I—at the end of it, I'd strongly encourage you to purchase the process—the project, in part because of the recreation, endangered species, and wetlands rehabilitation capacities that are afforded you. It's almost impossible to say that there are very many examples like this throughout the Pioneer Valley that other towns could take on. Now, this is almost a once-in-generation opportunity that you shouldn't let go by.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Would you please sign in, sir?
I did.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on Hickory Ridge? Okay. We have met the requirement over 50% of the time, being available for public comment, and so we are going to close the public forum at this time. We will take a five-minute recess, and the Town Council will convene for its regular meeting. All right. We're going to reconvene, and let me just reconvene. We already called the council to order, so I don't believe we need to do that again.
No, it's a separate meeting.
Oh, okay. I'm reminded by our clerk of the works that I'm now going to officially call the regular Town Council meeting to order at 7:20—no, 7:19. Let me begin by just reminding people that the Finance Committee of the Town Council will be discussing both projects tomorrow, although we will not be dealing in depth with Hickory Ridge. However, we will be dealing in depth with the Centennial Water Treatment Plant tomorrow at the Finance Committee meeting, which is at 2:30 in this room, and the Town Council will vote on the Centennial treat—water treatment plant on Monday, October 7, 2019, pending the recommendation from the Finance Committee. The—at present, it is planned that the Finance Committee will discuss the Hickory Ridge Golf Club course land—the purchase, I've said—and hopefully advance a recommendation to the full-town council. The full-town council, if all goes as planned, will take that up at our regular meeting on October 21.
Finance's first floor meeting room.
I'm sorry. Finance meeting tomorrow is on the first-floor meeting room. Okay? Thank you for that correction. I actually would like to ask if there's anybody here who is here to make general public comment. Okay. We do have several other times for public comment, particularly 6A, 7A, and 7B. We have no proclamations or commemorations, but I was glad to see that we had eight of us here today for the celebration of Puerto Rican celebration—the Puerto Rican Day and the raising of the flag. It was really exciting with many, many children there, singing songs and waving flags and dances that were done by teachers and professional staff from the schools. So with that, we're going to go on to our presentations and discussions for the long-awaited parking discussion. Drum roll. We have with us Christine Gray-Mullen and Jeff Kravitz, and I assume the two of you will also recognize the other members of the committee that are in the room. Your turn.
Good evening. Christine Gray-Mullen, I'm the Chair of the Downtown Parking Working Group, and yes, tonight is about parking. I'm just going to give a little brief history of where—what—my group and where we've come with parking in the last three years. So in 2016, the Downtown Parking Working Group was formed, and in 2016, shortly after, Nelson Igard was hired to do a parking study. And from their written study, we—the town made some adjustments to the parking system in November of 2017, so a couple of years ago, which was mostly about flipping two 6:00 PM lots with two 8:00 PM lots and switching that, and identifying some parking meters in the core, in the center, and they were changed from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And some enforcement hours were also adjusted, especially like in the area of the movie theater that had previously been two hours. It was changed to four hours to allow people to better, like, go to dinner and go to a movie. So then in 2018, the town went through an RFP process to rehire a parking consultant to continue the work that had been done in 2016. And at the end of the process, Nelson Igard was hired again. The work didn't actually start until April of this year in 2019, mostly so that the parking study part—the counts—could be done at a time to sort of catch peak of our system, which means higher ed is here, the students are here, trying to avoid, like, public school vacation, like, April vacation. And it's springtime, so it was an active time with events starting to happen, so they were capturing a peak. So that started in April, and also in April—on April 11th, there was the first of two public forums. And then on August 28th, just a month ago, they had the second public forum. So now we're at a point where they have a final draft, a parking implementation strategy report, and that's what they're going to come and talk to you about tonight. You might ask, well, what is final draft? It means that it's gone through some review in-house and with my committee and other people, and we want to bring it to you so that you can— they're going to try to do a summary of—there's a lot to unpack in this report, but they're going to try to give you a summary, and you all have gotten it, so hopefully you've looked through it. And if you all are like us, everybody has sort of their, like, little issues or things they're worried about with parking, so you can ask some questions to the consultant to get some clarifications or information, or it identifies to them where they might have to put a little bit more explanation in. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
Good evening. Jeff Kravitz, Economic Development Director and staff to the Downtown Parking Working Group for about the last year. Want to recognize, obviously, the Chair of the Downtown Parking Working Group, Christine Gray-Mullen. Also here this evening, Sharon Povinelli of the Downtown Parking Working Group, and Connie Cr— Kruger, who is a former Select Board Member and Downtown Parking Working Group and has stayed involved as a non-voting member since February. Other members of the Downtown Parking Working Group include Wendy Jones-Boisot, Sarah La Corre, and Catherine Porter. I also just wanted to take a moment to recognize other staff that's been working on this really hard. Senior Planner Nate Malloy and Collector and Assistant Treasurer Jennifer LaFountain have both made significant contributions, both with their time and expertise and knowledge of parking systems. And then just a couple of notes by way of introduction. I only started working on this about 10 months ago, but two things have become very clear. One is that we could have a better parking system in Amherst, and second is that parking is really complex. It's really a delicate network of a lot of interrelated factors, and if you change one thing over here, like price on metered spots, then it's going to have an effect on the permit system across town that you might not be expecting. So tonight, we're taking the first step to improve the system by receiving Nelson Nygaard's recommendations to create a cohesive, efficient, flexible, convenient, and predictable parking system. And it's also your opportunity to ask questions. You know, the, these are the transportation professionals. I think part of the reason that we felt it was important to hire consultants again is because as much work and effort as the Downtown Parking Working Group and staff have put into this, we are not trained parking experts, and these folks are. So shortly, the Downtown Parking Working Group will be submitting to you their priority recommendations, along with Nelson Nygaard's final report. And at that time, the council will consider those priorities as well as your own and determine the appropriate public process to discuss, debate, and if necessary, amend the recommendations before bringing them for a vote. Staff will be available to answer additional questions, but this is the opportunity, as I said, to talk with the parking experts. And with that, I will introduce Matt Smith and Jason Navsum of Nelson Nygaard.
Let me just use this opportunity to say ditto to what Jeff just said. We are not taking action tonight, and in fact, this is not the final report, nor will we be receiving the report of the Parking Committee with their preliminary recommendations. That will come at another time. So tonight is just the beginning of our conversation. Thank you. Let's proceed.
Hi, and thank you very much for having us. I'm Matt Smith. I am a Principal at Nelson Nygaard, and I've been working in transportation and urban planning for well over a decade, not only as a consultant, but also as a former Traffic and Parking Director at the City of Salem. So I've actually been on the, both the operations side from a municipal perspective, but also done a lot of consulting in various communities across the country. I'll let Jason speak as well.
Good evening. I am Jason Navsum. I am an associate with Nelson Nygaard. I work in, you know, conducting municipal parking plans and parking plans in the private sector around the country. And, you know, we, we hope tonight that we can really share both our expertise and our recommendations with you and also continue a dialogue.
Is your light on?
It, it is, yes.
Okay. Just make sure you speak closer to the mic. Thank you.
Okay. So we prepared this presentation, and the idea is exactly what it says, to give an overview. And we're going to highlight specifically certain strategies that just, I think, could use more explanation, and then obviously open to your comments. Why is this not working? Do I use this? That works. Okay, so just wanted to, so today, we're going to just talk about the project process, follow it by some of what we found the key issues and opportunities, and then the real, I would say, majority of the presentation will be on the recommendations within this report. We always like to kind of just let people know where we are. So we started with, you know, gathering data and input back in the spring to make sure that it reflected, I would say, more your peak parking times. Then we identified some key issues and opportunities. At that point is when we had our first public meeting to get solicit information from the public. Then what we did is we came up with some very draft preliminary ideas for recommendations, which we vetted with town staff as well as ourselves. And then we came up with an implementation plan, the draft strategies that we presented to the public as well to get some feedback. And here we are, what we call the final plan stage. We've presented a draft, and there will be some, obviously, as we said, some changes to that based on the feedback we receive. One thing we do want to say is that, so the previous work we did in 2016 was really much more of a data collection and analysis project. There was not a specific strategy with the goals that were set forth. So that's the key part that's different here. This one is much more based on the implementation of a strategy so that you could have as many, I would say, successful initiatives brought forward to see how it actually works to, I would say, create a more efficient parking system. We expanded the public engagement by hearing what the issues were from those on the ground, those who use the system, essentially. And then really what we're trying to do is focus our strategies to increase availability. And there's different ways we can look at that, and we'll be discussing that throughout the presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Jason right now and walk you through some of the existing parking inventory.
All right. Thank you, Matt. So, you know, I think the first part of this presentation will really focus on what were the key highlights from that first stage that Matt mentioned, the key issues report. And I believe that was also attached as an appendix to, you know, the packet that you received. So, you know, if there are further questions, please, you know, refer to that, but we'll, you know, take us through some of the highlights here. So the first thing I want to discuss is, you know, what's the general layout of how your parking's regulated and how much do you have? So you have about 3,300 spaces total within the downtown study area. The majority of these are private parking. So obviously, we have a limited ability to really control how those are functioning, how they're being regulated, but we still want to address them because it's an important part of the overall parking story. Then you have about 20% actual metered spaces. There's about 700 of those, so not a massive number, but they're there. And then in addition to that, we have, you know, about 350 of these town center permit spaces, as well as a few residential permits as well. And then, you know, another 280 are unregulated spaces. You can see, you know, we did conduct a full inventory of all parking spaces in the study area. You can see that in the image, you know, on the other side of the screen as well. So moving on, you know, let's take a little bit of a deeper look at how these things are being regulated. So, you know, about 30% of all of your parking spaces are actually available to the public during those regular eight to five hours, and that would include all of your metered spaces and your unregulated spaces. Now, after 5:00 PM and on weekends, and again, this is something we really want to highlight, those town center permit spaces are then open to everyone. So, you know, throughout this process, we realized that there's this great sort of bank of permit spaces that after 5:00 PM aren't really being used, and that's actual free public parking, you know, right in the heart of downtown. So we did want to call attention to that in a very prominent way. So moving on, you know, how things change really, you know, 2016 versus 2019? Well, you've done a good job actually consolidating some of your time limits and some of your regulations. So as you can see, you know, there's now many fewer sorts of regulations, you know, pertaining to that public parking. And you did, you know, sort of establish this two-stage system where those lower demand areas, more in the southern part of town that are a little bit less popular, those are priced less than those really core spaces on street. So, you know, we do consider that to be a good starting point compared to what you did have in 2016. So moving on, I'll get into the parking utilization. So we did go out on a full weekday and a full Saturday and count all the parked cars to really get a sense of what is that actual true demand. We did that throughout the day. I'll move on here and show you what that looks like specifically for your public parking. So this is just those metered spaces, no permits, none of your unregulated stuff. What we found was that you have a peak occurring at, on Saturdays at 7:00 PM, where 86% of your public parking is full. So 85% is typically the threshold that we see as the point where people start to feel like, hey, this is becoming a bit of a challenge to park. This feels full to me. So that's an important number. We also found that your weekday peak is also 7:00 PM. So I know that there have been some discussions around this. It is a consistent 7:00 PM peak, both on the full weekday that we counted and the weekend day. So now on the weekday, it was only 75% full, so you have more spaces available, obviously. But we did want to call attention that, yes, 7:00 PM is, is your, your peak, you know, to the best of our, our understanding. So just moving on, looking at those town center permit spaces, you can see, you know, the weekday chart, obviously, those are being well-used during the day. People are coming to work, they're using them, they're about 80% full. Then it comes to 5:00 PM, and this is when these spaces are actually open to anyone. They're completely free parking, no charge whatsoever, and you can see they're only half-full. So right there, you have at 7:00 PM 150 open spaces in, in the heart of town that are completely free, that people, you know, obviously may not be aware that they have access to these spaces. So that was a very big finding, you know, in our key issues process, absolutely. And then you can see on the weekend, you know, they're only really half-full throughout the entire day. Similar situation. So, you know, just to give you a visual of that, all of the dark blue areas, the dark blue lines on this map, those are those town center permit areas. We've tried to sort of highlight a lot of the more, you know, critical ones, but you can see a block away from the core streets of town are these spaces that are only half-full during your peak time. So given that proximity, you know, there's obviously some type of communication disconnect or something that's happening where people don't realize that they're actually able to park there, whether it's the lighting isn't good enough, they're not aware of it, things like that, the wayfinding is not good enough. So, you know, I think that that's an important, very important finding from that process. And then just to briefly touch on the private spaces, again, you know, our focus was mainly on the public spaces in town, but we did find that, you know, your, your private spaces are really only half-full during the weekday. That means that there are a lot of potential opportunities for more shared parking agreements to better utilize those spaces. Again, that wasn't the number-one focus of our plan, but it's important to, you know, consider that as part of the overall story. So moving on, you know, to touch on some of our findings in terms of management, technology, other aspects of the parking system, you know, we found that there are sort of a large number of different permit types. And given the small scale of downtown, we started to wonder, you know, can we consolidate some of these? Can we manage these in a way that's a little bit less complex? If you look at the rest of this chart here, you can see, you know, these are really all the different types of parking in town. You've got private parking, you've got different types of public parking, you've got unregulated, you've got, you know, your meters, your on-street versus your off-street. These are all the different elements that we really want to bring together as part of a unified system. And then in terms of your actual parking management structure, obviously, Town Council, you know, is charged with creating these regulations. As of now, Economic Development is the sort of prime coordinator, but then you can see down here, you have multiple different departments that are sort of in charge of each different element of the system, whether it's the police doing the enforcement, or planning helping with coordination, or Public Works, you know, with maintenance and engineering, senior senators dealing with their own permits. And this is sort of leading to a, I guess you would say, factionalization of the parking management. And you can see one of our key recommendations is, you know, how can we start to consolidate this and have, you know, a key leadership position that will sort of tie all these elements together? We did find that you have a lot of different payment options, a lot of different payment technologies. We think that's a really good thing. We think you could, you should continue to offer payment by cash, by coin. ParkMobile is doing great. We found that that's trending upward year over year. That's a very good thing. But we don't want to propose things that are overly reliant on, say, that ParkMobile technology. We want this to be an equitable system that works for everyone, even those who don't have smartphones, and we did want to highlight that tonight as well. So now we'll just dive right into the recommendations, and I'll just do a quick overview. So if you've seen the report, you, you've seen that we've grouped our recommendations under eight key goals. So these came out of the public meeting process and our discussions with stakeholders and town staff. You know, I think, you know, these have been vetted throughout that process, but we've selected five tonight that we really wanted to focus on for further discussion. Of course, we're happy to take questions on any of these, and that's not to say that these five are the most important. They're all important. But we believe these are, you know, the ones that are most likely to need a continued conversation. So with that, I'll move into Goal One and turn it back over to Matt.
Great. Thanks, Jason. Let me start. So the first thing that, one of the key issues that we identified is that your, as Jason just showed with that, with this exact same, well, one of these kind of, I would say, patterns of how things are run, is that your management structure is really decentralized. The reason why that this is, can be kind of a problem is that there's really no clear understanding of who is responsible for parking. So complaints, issues, changes are going to different people, and it's getting lost in the shuffle. That's something we heard through different meetings and stakeholder engagement. So really, what you want to make sure is that everything is being aligned in a centralized place. So that's our goal. So it's, we have eight goals. One is to create that efficient, responsive parking management structure. So that will allow for, essentially, I think, the most important is to having a dedicated parking management position will add efficiency and clarity to people. Within the, it'll also, you know, really allow, I'd say, for just more of an effective management structure generally when you're making decisions. And then finally, there's another recommendation we'll talk about, about Parking Benefit District, which is, we're going to highlight here. But really, the main, I would say, one of the most important things is the idea of having a dedicated transportation parking leadership position. As has already been mentioned, parking in a downtown that has actually different seasonality, that has different types of businesses, is a very complex, I would say, monster. There's so many different things that you can change, and if it's not coordinated, you may have many unintended consequences. So having that full-time leader will really, I would say, give that clarity of how this system is being managed and who needs to be doing it. It'll allow a better chance for many of these strategies to be implemented because it'll be coordinated in a very orderly way. And key, again, having a central point of contact is essential, and we did hear that constantly throughout this process, that some people will go to, you know, the police because of enforcement issues. Some people will know to go to Jeff because he coordinates the economic. Some people just don't know where to go. And so that's one of the main pieces, and that's, that's, I would say, it's a common finding we find in other studies as well. The other piece, and this is, kind of leads to it, is to come up with a really comprehensive communication program. A lot of times when you have systems that are changing or even small tweaks, if they're not communicated, it can really confuse people and upset people. That's one of the, I would say, the biggest concerns. You know, anytime when you've got, when you're used to something and how it's been, if there's not clarity that it has changed or it's going to change, it's, that's where you've really run into the problem. So this goes everything from when you do make changes, it's good to do enough at one time so that you can start everything from, starting with press releases, getting that communication out there, going down to who are you supposed to be contacting in the town when you actually have a question about it? Without that clarity, that's where more confusion arises. Really, ongoing communications with stakeholder groups to make sure this is something that actually makes sense is also key, or maybe when there are concerns. And then really, when it's a bigger piece, have public meetings, allow that public feedback. We're giving you recommendations, but the recommendations have to continue to be discussed over time. None of this should be done all at once. That's the whole point. You want to make sure that you're actually responding to the, I would say, the conditions and how each different change is working. And then another piece is that we say, establish a Parking Benefit District to fund downtown parking infrastructure programs. We know that you already have a transportation fund. What's different here is that a Parking Benefit District explicitly uses those revenues, and it's only able to be used within the downtown parking system. So that can be everything from staffing costs, it can be for technology upgrades, it can be for infrastructure upgrades. We're talking, that could be if you're doing crosswalks, if you're doing curbing, if you're adding to new, it could be debt service for new facilities. So the idea is that you're actually using the revenue generated within the district from those who are parking to actually manage the overall system. Oh, sorry. And so we always like to provide a case study here and there. Old Town Pasadena in California is probably the, one of the best examples of this, one of the oldest, and it's one where they actually established it decades ago, and all of those revenues have been used to actually really boost what's this, I think it's Colorado Avenue. And as you can see, we don't even look at the numbers anymore because it's been so successful, but we still go back to, we know that in 1.5 million in 2011, we're raised just for that. And one of the things that we really like about this example and what's happened in other places is that on the meters, it's, and kiosks and things like that, they always say, like, your actual money is going to make Old Pasadena a safer, better, cleaner place. People seem to have a little bit more, I would say, comfort with paying for parking when they know it's actually going to make the system a little bit better or the environment better as well. Now, I'm going to turn this over to Jason.
Thank you, Matt. So the next section we really wanted to highlight, and again, this is all in our report, but, you know, we identified, obviously, that one of your key issues is that your public parking is very full. So that's that 86% full that we identified on Saturdays at 7:00 PM, although you're also 75% full at 7:00 PM on weekdays. So where did that lead us? Well, what we found is that given how many constraints you have around your parking supply, the best thing you can do is make a convenient system, predictable system, and flexible system. If a user is coming to town, they're not familiar with the system, they're hunting for a space because it is fairly full, they find one, you want to make sure that that space works for them, whether it's the time limits that apply to it, the cost, whatever that regulation may be. You want to make sure that you're taking care of your residents, your workers, and your visitors. So that was sort of the goal that came out of that, that finding from the key issues report. So, that was sort of the goal that came out of that finding from the Key Issues Report. So, the first strategy to tackle that is set very clear availability and turnover goals for the system. Again, that eighty-five percent target, that is the threshold at which we usually find that people feel that parking is starting to feel a little bit too full for comfort. That is a recommended utilization target, although the town can certainly have their own conversations about what makes the most sense. You're sort of already in that place during your peak, but not every day. So, that sort of leads us to the next strategy here that's part of this goal, too. Conduct routine parking counts. In order to effectively manage your system, in order to effectively set prices, you need to track that utilization. That's going to help you inform your parking experts and key leadership in the town about what's actually going on and what needs to be done to fix any issues that may arise. That's something that can be done, you know, with temporary staff. We have a great source here with, you know, the universities. So, we would recommend, on a quarterly basis, conducting parking counts similar to what we conducted for this study. And again, we'll pass along those raw counts as well as a model for what you might be able to do in the future. And use that as sort of a benchmark on how you can move forward. So, moving on to the next part of this is something that I want to make sure we spend adequate time on. So, this is graduated pricing. So, for those who aren't familiar, graduated pricing is a pricing scheme in which the price for longer hours, the hourly rate for those longer hours, starts to slightly increase over whatever your base rate may be. So, that's a good way to allow you to actually eliminate time limits completely. You don't need time limits whatsoever in this scheme because you're now able to manage your turnover using price. So, for example, most of your on-street meters here in town have a two-hour time limit. If I'm coming downtown and I want to see a movie, or I want to go out to eat and then do some shopping, whatever it may be, I might need more than two hours. But what if I can only find a two-hour space? That's going to be a bad user experience. So, if you're able to eliminate all of those time limits, that's great. But you want to make sure you're still getting some turnover so people aren't coming and parking for eight hours just because they can, and it's easy to do. That's why, let's say, you maintain that $1-an-hour price for the first two hours, exactly the same as it is now. But you now offer people the ability to stay beyond two hours by paying a slight premium. Now, this is just an example rate structure here. We're not proposing these rates, you know, that's an ongoing conversation. But that is the general idea behind this, is that you can now stay as long as you want, no matter where you are. That's a great thing. But we do want to make sure people move along, you know, once they've actually been able to complete the activities they came here for. And that's why you just slightly raise that price once they start to go beyond whatever your turnover target may be. And again, this is covered in more detail in the report, but I did want to stress that this strategy is about flexibility. I know that there were some concerns with this, that this might deter people from staying longer. But I want to clarify that our goal with this is to allow people to stay longer. No more time limits, stay as long as you want. You might have to pay a little bit more to do so, but you'll never be in a situation where you're stuck in a space that doesn't work for you, because you'll always be able to stay as long as you need. And again, here's another case study from Santa Cruz, California. They were able to implement a similar system of these sort of graduated prices. They found that with this scheme, you know, fifty-five percent of their users were staying for one to two hours. So, that's those quick sort of one-activity trips. Twenty-three percent of their users were staying in that two-to-four-hour range, and then only a few were staying longer than eight hours. But the real finding here is that there were many fewer citations, because no more time limits, no one's overstaying their time. That's a better user experience. No one likes to get a parking ticket, and with a scheme like this, you're going to be able to really reduce the number of citations you're handing out, you know, for going overtime, something like that. They also noticed that their overall revenue increased. Maybe people were able to stay longer than they were before, or they felt comfortable staying longer. That was another excellent finding, and they did have a Parking Benefit District as well. So, those additional revenues were going right back into the downtown, right back into that parking system and that transportation network. So, now I'll go into Goal Four. And this is where, you know, we wanted to really highlight that employee parking is a challenge. Employee parking, especially for small business employees who may not have access to their own dedicated private parking, they're relying on either the public parking system, the metered areas, or that town center permit, which we found is underused. So, the goal that came out of this was to make the overall parking system more user-friendly and really make that parking permit program feel more, you know, more reliable to the people that could or should be using it. So, how do we refine that town center permit? Well, the first thing that we would recommend is move it to an all-year permit. You know, you want individuals who may be interested in using this to feel secure in it, to feel like this is a consistent regulation. There's really no reason for you to not move to an all-year permit system. You know, my understanding is that maybe these permits originally were created to deal with some of the, you know, during the school year, parking issues. That's fine, we do want to deal with those issues. But making this an all-year system gives it that sort of sense of permanence that is going to make people feel more comfortable relying on that rather than going to park in a lot or park in a meter. We would also say that there are some key employers that are, you know, just outside of the town center permit area right now that might be very interested in using it. I know the Dickinson Museum expressed interest. You know, I think some of the streets right next to them are actually regulated as permit streets, but they're not actually able to get the permit. So, that was something that came to our attention as well. In terms of future considerations, we would not recommend increasing the cost of that permit now, because it is underused. However, again, if you're monitoring that utilization regularly, you see that, okay, our permit spaces are now over eighty-five percent used on a consistent basis. That's when maybe you consider increasing that cost. Another way you could do that is maybe you have a different cost for an employee to use that permit versus a resident, things like that. But I will say that the $25 a year that it is now is actually relatively in line with what other towns in Massachusetts are doing with similar programs. Despite the fact that it is very inexpensive, that is actually a fairly, you know, common figure, I would say. Another thing you can do in the future is move to license plate readers. That's going to make it a lot easier for you to enforce that permit system. Right now, there's a lot more manual effort involved. If you move to the license plate readers, it really allows you to streamline the whole system. And if further down the line, you found that you're really running out of these permit spaces, you could start to put a cap on how many permits are actually available per residence. Again, we're not recommending that at this time, it doesn't seem necessary. But down the line, you can say, okay, each residence, you now have access to only two permits. That's just an example. Those are just further considerations. So, moving on, there are a lot of complementary strategies that go into making that parking permit work for your employees. So, and again, we know, we've heard many sides of this issue. We will say that in order to most effectively manage both the employee parking issue and your general peak parking issues, which are, again, taking place at 7:00 PM, both weekdays and weekends, we would recommend to most effectively do that, enforce your meters until 8:00 PM. We have certainly heard, you know, that there are issues with that. It's not in sync with neighboring towns, you know, how does that impact customers, things like that. We want to be sensitive to those issues. Those are, those are important issues. I will say that the 8:00 PM enforcement is going to allow you to keep small business or restaurant employees in those evening hours from just feeding meters all night, which, you know, given how inexpensive that permit is, that should be the obvious option for them. But if you're only enforcing until 6:00 PM, let's say they're starting at 4:00 PM, that's only two hours, they're going to pay the meter, then they're in for the rest of the night. We just wanted to highlight that as well. Beyond that, you know, you do have a significant number of reserved spaces in that Boltwood Garage. So, that was another area where we felt that, given our observations, these were not more than maybe half-full during your peak time. So, is there a different way that you can manage those, whether it's reducing the number of spaces or requiring that, you know, each space has to be used a certain number of times per month to ensure that they are at least being used by who's purchasing them? Or maybe shifting to a model where you can buy a permit to park there, but it's not an assigned space? That would allow you to actually oversell those spaces gradually by a small amount to ensure that they're actually filling up, you're not wasting any spaces in that really critical core part of your downtown. So, we would recommend, you know, thinking about other options for that. Obviously, there are stakeholders who are, you know, invested in actually having access to those spaces, but we did want to bring attention to those as well. And finally, you know, and Matt already touched on this, having a very robust communication strategy about all of these options is really, really important. It seems like there may be a large number of employees who maybe are not aware of the permit, or they don't realize how much money it could save them on an annual basis to utilize that. So, making sure that you're passing the word on through as many outlets as possible with consistent messaging is very, very important. So, with that, I'll go into Goal Six. So, another key issue that came out, you know, in that Key Issues process is that not all of the parking policies and the enforcement strategies in place are customer-friendly. And obviously, we want Amherst to be a very vibrant downtown. We want to implement programs that make downtown Amherst more inviting and convenient for all those customers, whether they're locals or they're visitors from outside of town. So, one aspect of this that we feel like may be very appealing is the possibility of a parking validation system. So, both your kiosks and your Park Mobile app can easily accommodate this. You know, if there are obviously some concerns about going to consistent 8:00 PM enforcement time, this will allow business owners to actually waive that cost for their customers if they feel that that is something that would be beneficial. Again, you already have the technology to do this. So, we wanted to highlight that maybe this is a way to make that 8:00 PM enforcement a little bit more palatable. Moving on, another option, you know, for some of those customer parking issues is a shared valet program. So, this is something that likely would not be run by the town, but it's something that the town could help organize, you know, help connect interested business owners, help them pool their resources to create that valet program. And if demand were to actually grow enough, it was being highly utilized, the town could actually consider offering some public parking area to be utilized for that. Since the restaurants, for example, are a big driver of your public parking demand, that would be an obvious potential overlap. Again, the town wouldn't be running that, but could help connect interested businesses to do so. And finally, how do we actually deal with the enforcement itself? So, this is something we like to call the Parking Ambassador Model. One of the worst experiences as a customer that you can have, coming to a new place, you come to a restaurant, you hunt for parking, you find a space, you think you've done everything right, and you come out, you find that you have a parking ticket. That's not a great experience. So, we like to introduce the Parking Ambassador System as a way to offer some critical features, such as first-time forgiveness. Especially if you're able to get some of that supplemental technology, like the license plate readers, it's easy to track that. So, this would mean, the first time someone does something wrong, maybe they just get an information packet on their windshield that says, hey, looks like you didn't park in the right place, here's where you could have parked. That's going to be a lot better message to send to them. Another thing we would recommend is formalizing an actual eight-minute grace period. And again, you know, many of your enforcement officers may already not be ticketing people for going five minutes over. But you would want to formally say, until it's eight minutes over, you know, we're getting, we're cutting people a little bit of slack. You know, working in tandem with that graduated pricing system, that's going to really cut down on the number of citations that you have to hand out and create that better customer experience. All right, and I'll move into Goal Eight and turn it back over to you, Matt.
Great. So, as we've been talking about already, is that you are at that kind of critical place, at your peak on Saturdays, where you're at eighty-six percent full. So, it does feel like, you know, you do have a very full system as a customer. So, one of the things we have to be realistic about is that you will have to add different types of facilities over time to hopefully add to the overall parking inventory. So, there's other considerations to really take into account, though. And one of them is that parking, creating parking, particularly structured parking, is very expensive. And it will, that will be something that the town would have to be paying for, for many years. Excuse me. So, you want to make sure that you're going to pursue the strategy and the plan, you want to do all this first before you would actually make that investment. Excuse me. So, one thing I just want to kind of talk about, there's like three different ways we're looking at this. So, there are opportunities for you to expand the parking availability within some of your current facilities. This is one of my favorite examples of trying, is that, so this is the Boltwood Garage, which is really more of a platform over an underground facility. There's a lot of wasted space for a plaza. This is one of those kinds of things that the intention was right, I think, but the practicality of it is not necessarily. This is not a place where really anybody's going to choose to go sit, particularly across the street, when you can go into the common. So, right there, we know that trucks come and load there, so we would assume that that has the structural integrity to carry more parking spaces. Given the number of spaces, you could probably add ten or twelve more spaces right there. So, that's one way to just add. And when you really don't have a huge parking lot like that, which, as you can see, that does add quite a bit. When you actually combine the strategy that Jason was also mentioning by looking to maybe open up some of those reserved spaces underneath as well, now you've actually added quite a bit more parking in one facility to handle, you know, the side of these busiest hours. The other piece is that your parking spaces on-street are, tend to be a little bit longer than most. So, they, you could re-stripe them down to about twenty feet and get some parking efficiencies, add a few spaces here and there. That's also something that having kiosks and changing your technology would help, because now you don't need an individual meter at every single space. And if you don't specifically stripe for every space itself, you'll have even more efficiencies because people will be able to park slightly closer for a smaller car, et cetera. And then, just looking at all of your lots, doing a quick assessment to see, are there more efficiencies in which you could, you know, squeeze a parking space in here or there? It sounds like a small, I would say, strategy, but every one of those parking spaces, when you only have, you know, you have seven-hundred-metered spaces, every one of those is going to start to add up. So, that's the first thing you want to do to help alleviate that. Keep doing that. The other is when you're adding new facilities, look to add them through public-private partnerships. So, what we mean by that is that you have seen new development, and currently, your zoning does not require parking for that. But as we've also seen, many of them have included parking, maybe not, you know, one per unit, but there's, I believe, there's like thirty-plus spaces at One North Pleasant. So, obviously, they understand the market, that they do need to provide some. But what you need to do is, as you're doing these utilization counts to see what your, what your current utilization is on-street, particularly in those residential areas, keep tracking that as new development occurs. You'll start to understand when and where you may need more parking, or when and where you might need to trigger some other strategies to either have some kind of a partnership where the private sector works with the town to actually maybe build a facility, where there could be, you could have some shared parking agreements. And so, if they do provide parking, can you get that to be shared, particularly for commercial developments, things like that? And really, just, at any time, just support that private investment. If you can get that, then that's, that's a cost that you don't have to incur as the, as the town itself. So, really, look, reach out at the beginning when proposals are coming through, negotiate from the start. Don't try to do it at the end. At the end, it doesn't work, there's usually been too much investment in the design and the planning. So, really get in there as soon as possible. And if you are looking for expansion, we just showed one. If you do at some point, when you receive, when you hit that eighty-five percent utilization frequently, not once a week, you don't want to change your entire parking system because one day a week, you're getting beyond that eighty-six percent. That's a huge investment that will be very hard to actually make up. But when it, when it becomes a regular thing, a couple of days a week, frequently throughout the year, when you start to see your summer months, which are quieter, start hitting that, that's when you really want to start thinking of a larger facility. And at that point, you do have a few locations, and perhaps you could go higher where the Boltwood facility is now. There are challenges there, there's many businesses that face that, so that's a problem. You do also have the North and South Common Lots, we're talking not on the common, maybe underneath. But again, that's very costly, because now you have to structure on top of it. The North Pleasant Street Lot, which is the public portion behind the CVS, is one of probably the best options. But we also know that there are some accessibility challenges in there, there's very narrow entries in and out, and it's not actually very able to handle pedestrians and car traffic going through. So, that's a challenge as well. And then, the Amity Street Lot and adjacent private lots, perhaps there could be some other ability to actually negotiate to maybe make something that would be larger and do that. The one thing we want to caution, though, is that, and this is one of the challenges we found, is that you're not a big, huge downtown. So, location here is going to matter where a parking facility goes. So, the one thing that we always like to say is that people are always looking for convenience. The reality is, everybody wants to park in front of the store in which they're going to. That's not a reality in a downtown, it's not a reality really anywhere. But so, if you put one facility in one part of your downtown, that doesn't necessarily mean everybody's going to go to it, particularly when there are different, you know, I would say, almost like quadrants in the way that you're laid out. So, you have to be very strategic about it. And then, I'm going to turn this over to Jason, but the other thing we have talked about, we call progressive mobility requirements. And this is really response to the fact that you don't currently have parking requirement for new, or new development in downtown. And Jason's actually worked quite a bit in coming up with these kinds of policies.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, so, you know, again, typically, the lack of a parking requirement is something that we feel can be a positive. There are a lot of positive aspects to this. It can promote a walkable environment, a bikeable environment. It can help make your downtown more attractive and avoid unnecessary construction of parking. Typically, we would consider that a best practice. Now, given the fact that here in town, you are starting to hit that utilization point where you're feeling too full in your parking, now is the time to maybe think about, you know, at some point in your future, implementing some sort of know, at some point in your future, implementing some sort of, again, we're not calling it a partner requirement, we're calling it a mobility requirement, and that's a key distinction. So under these sorts of requirements, developers aren't asked to, say, build one parking space per new residential unit, something like that. They're asked to fulfill a certain number of points based on the land use that they're, you know, proposing. So those points could be fulfilled through adding parking. They would get a bonus if they were to provide shared parking, which is going to benefit everyone in town. They could earn those points through adding bicycle and pedestrian improvements in downtown. They could earn those points by paying a fee directly per space to town into maybe that parking benefit district to actually fund other improvements in town. They could also earn points offering transportation demand management measures on their site, whether that's Zip Cars, other types of shared cars, subsidized transit passes for their employees if it's a commercial use, something like that. Basically, there are a lot of flexible options here. So, you know, we could really go into depth on this. I would say, you know, please refer to the appendix that we provided with our report that really goes into detail about how some of these requirements have worked in other towns, because it is sort of, you know, there are a lot of options, there are a lot of ways to implement this. But if you were to go the route of creating a parking requirement, we would say this mobility requirement model is the way to do it. It'll preserve the benefits you have now of not actually having an explicit parking requirement while still incentivizing developers to actually contribute to the overall transportation And again, this is just, you know, an example of maybe how many points would be required for some various uses. Again, I would just refer you to that appendix for more of the in-depth discussion of how these requirements might actually work. So with that, thank you very much for having us. It's been a pleasure to work here in town. We hope that this plan is able to move Amherst in the right direction in terms of parking and...
Okay. We're going to now move to questions from the Town Council and then on to public comments. So we'll start with questions. Steve?
Actually, I was going to do Andy.
Oh, Andy, okay.
Thank you very much for the presentation, it was very informative. Couple things, one is on the Parking Benefit District. As far as I can tell, the major difference between that and the Transportation Enterprise Fund is what the funds that are collected from the parking system can be used for, otherwise really has all of the attributes of an enterprise fund. And for Amherst, that poses a problem because we do do other transportation needs, including the bus system is funded through the Transportation Enterprise Fund. So I'm not sure how that works for us, given the uniqueness of our budgeting process. So the second thing was, that I had about this was, the, recently, the Gazette in Northampton had an extensive series of downtown issues for our neighboring community of Northampton, and it was striking how many comments in that article had to do with parking, when in fact, they're always cited as the gold standard because they only collect until 6 o'clock and they have the parking garage. But yet, a number of people who were interviewed for the article and said, hey, there are really problems with downtown Northampton now, they were coming back to some of the same issues that we've been discussing here for a while. So I didn't know if you had any thoughts about that. And the other thing, and the last thing that you had, didn't talk about much today, was the construction of the new garage. You did a little bit. One of the things that I had noted in your presentations has been an estimate of $40,000 per space to build and $275 per month of revenue. When I've looked at the revenue figures for our current spaces, the highest annual revenue for the Amity Main Street Lots and the Boltwood Upper Level Garage are between $1,200 and $1,500 per year. So I don't know if we can ever build a garage construction into a feasible plan, but I don't know what your thoughts are on that. So those are the three things I thought about.
Sure, I can tackle a bunch of them. In terms of the PBD difference, you do have the Transportation Fund, and the idea is, we recommend it within this structure, just in the fact that it would be dedicated to specific downtown uses because that's where the revenue is being generated. In terms of things like bus system, believe it or not, that there are certain restrictions within a Parking Benefit District of which funds can be used. Bus service is actually one of them because it funnels people to your parking system, and it can actually create, I would say, the, the access to and from from another means. So it actually impacts your parking. I think, that would be a deeper dive, and that's something we've actually talked internally. But we do think one of the great things about them is that it does limit where that money is so that it creates a little bit less infighting when it comes to budget season. Having been on another side of this in public, I understand how that works. So I think part of the idea is that a lot of times, your downtown is what's bringing people to the community often, and so the idea of keeping and putting your best face forward essentially is one of the reasons for doing that, because it can have other benefits in the, I would say, in the larger scheme of things. But that obviously always requires a deeper dive that you would then have to go through. It's a process, it has to be agreed upon through the town, but it's just, it is a recommendation we would make. And understanding a little bit more about where those monies go outside of the downtown would also be part of that recommendation. In terms of the Gazette in Northampton, this is something we like to say, for some reason, no matter where, I've been doing different type of permit planning and transportation planning for a very long time now, and parking is always the most emotional thing that people talk about. It's, it's really, it's an interesting kind of reality. I think that's a prime example. We were actually reading an article about Northampton not so long ago, I think it was like published in September, and some people are saying, business is up, some are saying business is down, some people says I can find a space, some people said I can't find a space, and that's what we hear every community we go to. I think the reality is, is that perception is reality and that's your experience, but that doesn't mean that it's, it's an accurate reflection of what's actually available. I think that's one of the main reasons we were talking about the Town Center permit areas. You know, it's really interesting that you do hit that seven, that 86% on a Saturday, but then we see that within a block or two of probably where most people are going, there's free parking. So a lot of times, that's the communication, and within the, the plan itself, there's much more discussion on that as well. But having clear understanding of how your parking system works and through signage is really critical. Your signage needs, does need help, it needs to be far more visible to people. You know, we, we talk about the one, the lot behind CBS, the North Pleasant or North, I think it's called. But there's, it's a faded sign, it's a very narrow entry. If you aren't from here, you're not going to know that there's a parking space there, and you actually might not think that it's right. And I'm not, I'm not, it's a good effort, but you just might not understand. So the clarity is really important, and that's when I think you can start to see change. We've actually discussed, the exit from that is probably the street just to the north of it, that would probably be more pleasant than actually walking through the little narrow entry for CBS. But again, that's wayfinding, that's signage, two shops, two Main Street. So that's really important. And then in terms of the construction of a new garage, that is why we are in the business of parking. We are part of, we're not just looking at the system and understanding what's happening, we're also looking at how can, how can towns, cities, all different sizes, manage this effectively, given how costly it is to build a parking structure. I used to manage two of them. It's not just the cost to build them, trust me, the maintenance costs over time are huge. Concrete has a lot of water issues, just letting you know that, is that, so not only are you paying to build it, but you're going to have to maintain it, and that's a pretty big annual cost. When you need one, sometimes that is just a public benefit, you, that you agree that you're not going to make that all up in the revenue you'll generate, and that's a decision you would have to make at that time. However, it's also really complex when you have a smaller downtown, if you build that garage in one location, what if it's not really considered by most people to be convenient? Then that's a real risk. So I think if you're going to go into that, I would say that strategy, you have to be very thoughtful. And I, we always advise to really try to do as much as you can to manage your system more effectively through pricing strategies, efficiencies of striping, to really have that impact. In the end, if that doesn't work, that's when you really should start to actually consider that big capital investment. Want to add one piece, the other reason that's really challenging now is that parking is changing rapidly between, you know, ride-hailing, like Ubers and Lifts, people are getting around in different ways, and it's not just in the big cities, it's in the smaller, the smaller cities than the towns. That is only going to increase. Actually, we just saw someone riding one of the e-bikes coming down, it looked like a student. People have more options to invest in that kind of money, just from the, as like the first solution, we just typically feel is not the responsible move.
Steve?
Thank you. So... You answered some of my questions, but then I have some to, to add. So one thing is, you mentioned that the town can't afford to build structured parking, but there wasn't much discussion about, I mean, there was some discussion about private-public, but if you go to truly dense cities, oftentimes, the structured parking is provided by private sources. So presumably, that, we haven't reached that threshold yet where private developers would want to build structured parking, but I think that should be part of the conversation. The other thing is that parking is, in a way, a public utility, much like, say, water and sewer. So the density of parking is very much related to the density of the community. So in a way, what you're talking about is Amherst status quo. So Amherst has a, downtown has a fairly low density, and in fact, a lot of the places that you're looking are one-story or less with, you know, basically built at a different time. But if the aspiration is to, and our master plan talks about how downtown would become much more dense, you know, maybe four stories, five stories, that aspiration has to be dealt with. So in other words, the world of surface parking, those surface parking lots should be building lots, and so something has to be done about that. So concentrating parking into a structure as an aspiration just seems like a common-sense approach to this. So I think a structured parking for the status quo doesn't make sense, but structured parking for the future does make sense, in the same way that if you wanted the town to, the downtown to be developed more densely and everyone was on a well, you, that well is going to limit how dense it'll ever become. But if you build a municipal water system, that'll change the conversation. The other thing is Strategy 8B, so you have expansion strategies, and one of them is North Common Expansion, actually, South Common Expansion, and I'd urge you to please strike that, because at best, so the, better said is, that's the actual common, so people park on our actual common, and that is a point of contention, but I don't think that anyone is talking about expanding parking on the common. There are conversations about reducing parking on the common, but, so those are my, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Okay. Dorothy?
I went to one of your forums, and we've, you've come before, and I want to thank you for teaching me all the parts that go into a parking system, but I would like to rearrange them. When you talked about the underutilized private parking, those are places where people who know can make deals. So that could be businesses who need parkers, parking for their workers. It would mean some of the apartment buildings that did not provide very much parking or no parking at all, because they know and they can do it ahead of time. People from out of town or people who don't live in the center of town don't know. So I'm suggesting, let's keep all the street parking for them. I want to get rid of all the special permits except for the ones that are connected to residences. And so if you drive into town from any part of town or from out of town, there's a lot of street parking, and yet the people who know ahead of time, the businesses, the workers, and the apartment buildings, have put together some of these public-private partnerships you've talked about. And then I think we'd have a lot of parking, or at least it would solve a lot of problems.
Shalini?
So I really appreciated the philosophy of moving away from more parking is better. It seems like the smart use of the spaces, the emphasis on that is really, I appreciated that, given all the alternative models we're going to have of transportation. One question that I was curious about was, when we say that the demand is not that great, like it's only on Saturdays at 7:00 p.m., it's reaching 85%, how do we know that it's, that it's our lack of supply that's causing a low demand? And what I mean is, do we have data, for example, of other towns like Northampton, when, how did their economic vitality change once they built the garage? Is that clear? So I mean, how do we know that because we don't have parking, that's why people are not coming?
So we'll pause for a moment, go back to the consultants.
Thank you, Yao. I'll just turn, turn to your question first. I, you know, I think that's a good point, and I think another aspect of this, which we haven't really discussed here at all in detail tonight, is the future demand analysis that we did include as an appendix as well to that final report. So we did use what we call a shared parking model, which looks at the land uses that you have, excuse me, in town, as well as future proposed land uses, to see, based on industry standards, how much parking is expected to be, or parking demand is expected to be generated by these land uses. So we didn't highlight that here tonight, that is included, you know, with that other information. I would say that, you know, through that analysis, we didn't find, looking at all of your parking, private and public together, that you were deficient of parking. The total amount of parking is sufficient to support the land uses that you do have today, as well as you might have in the, in the near future. However, you're still, you're still hitting that 85%. That means that there are some things that you may be able to do with the way you're regulating with some of the potential shared parking agreements, which were also mentioned. Those are some of the things that we would say tackle those first and see what that does to that 85% number. I don't believe, you know, especially considering those Town Center permit spaces are only half-full during those 7:00 p.m. peaks, that your parking, you know, I, you know, in your example, that the parking is actually, the limited supply is limiting that demand. I, I would say that I don't feel that there's evidence of that taking place here, given how many open spaces you do have in, you know, that maybe just aren't as well-known. If that demand was so high, then people would have started to realize that they should be parking there, most likely in greater numbers. I, I hope that, that answers that question.
Kathy?
I just, I just want to build on some of the earlier comments, starting with a question, you talk about uniform hours and immediately chose eight. Why not six? So that's my first question. And whether it's a perception or reality, the perception is that you're not as likely to come down for dinner and a movie if the price tag goes up by this amount, and our businesses are not thinking of, oh, we'll just comp you for a couple extra dollars, and our movie theater certainly isn't. So, so that's, why not six? I can understand uniformities, first question. And second, on permits, the permit policy, you said, we probably don't have too many because the slots are not used all the time or after five. But you showed the slots in your appendix, there were 800 permits issued in FY '17. You didn't have a 19 figure, but that was up by more than 100 from the year before. And so if it kept going up, we might be, you know, at the 800, 900. And we don't have a difference in, if I'm a downtown resident and I have a license plate registered in Amherst, or a worker, or I have a license plate registered in another state, and a differential on a, you are genuinely a resident and a more, and a differential pricing with favoritism to the employees, could, limited supply, but you could open up some of those permitted spots for meters if you wanted to. You know, if you think of the spots on the street, because they are often, the ones really near downtown are often occupied before five, so for coming in for lunch. So don't think of them as always empty, they are, they're prime slots. And many, in our town, many of those are because if you parked on UMass where you could have a permanent parking place, it's money, it's 100 times more expensive. So just say, if you're not even going to register your car in Amherst, then park it over there. So I'm just thinking about pricing and quantity, and think of what that frees up. So I want to, on permit, both quantity and price. I was intrigued by the AMR, the access man, management regulation, thinking of paying in and offering alternatives. So I had a question of, could you do that by regulation? Do you have to do a zoning law change? So new developers coming in, alerting them, so it was a question on a, if you wanted to do that, what would happen to it first? And then, I've got a bunch more, but I'll just go to my one other one on spaces that I think are available. The underground parking lot has 29... The underground parking lot has 29 spaces that are leased at $1,000 year-round. What would happen if, and this would be a test to the market, would people still lease them for the same price if we said it's eight till six? So at night, you could park in those slots, and on Sunday and Saturday, you could, our peak load time, it's 29 spaces right in the middle of town. And if you took a picture down there of that garage, as much as people don't like to go there, but I park there all the time, you'd see most of those reserved are empty and the others are full. So we've got 29 spaces that are being underused because someone has a long-term leasehold. And so, so just thinking in terms of freeing up 29 spaces at evening and weekend hours, it's a big chunk that you can walk to everything. So it's that interaction with your jigsaw puzzle.
Do you have any comment on that?
Yes, so I think those are, those are excellent questions, and I think, you know, as we're all sort of realizing, parking is very complicated, and shifting a regulation in one place can have an impact in a totally different, different place. So I'll start with, you know, talking about the 8:00 PM versus 6:00 PM. You know, again, our recommendation is that, you know, our recommendation for 8:00 PM stems from the fact that you are experiencing your weekday and your weekend peaks during that time. And given that you're, you're brushing up against that utilization where things start to feel uncomfortable for people, in order to effectively deal with that, you will most likely need to be able to enforce meters during that time. Now, not all of our strategies require you to be enforcing specifically at that time to still address that issue, but things like the pricing scheme, things like ensuring that employees are using the town center permits rather than the meters, it's going to be a challenge to really move forward on those to address your peak utilization if you're not enforcing during that time. There are certainly valid considerations on the other side, saying, you know, what is this impact going to be on customers? There may be hesitancy from the business community to, you know, maybe engage with that validation program. But we would urge, you know, to continue outreach surrounding that, because, you know, we feel that that is your best bet in order to effectively manage that peak demand. It's not to say you can't have an effective system where you two go consistently to 6:00 PM. It's certainly possible. There are a lot of strategies in here that are still achievable while working within 6:00 PM.
I think the other piece to think about is that most parking regulations really were enacted years ago when the peak was during the day, when downtown Main Streets were far more of a diverse retail environment. And for many reasons, that has changed, not in Amherst, just in Amherst, but throughout. Today, downtowns are becoming increasingly dining destinations where the peak has switched. So if we're talking about regulations that were actually put in place to manage your peak demand during the day, it's increasingly common, there's another community that I can think of, that's like Beverly, Massachusetts, which goes to eight for that very reason. The peak now is not the middle of the day. The peak now is increasingly at evening. And what you're doing with, with pricing strategies and regulatory strategies is managing your peak. And that's one of the reasons we, Jason said, you know, we're going for six o'clock, particularly as you're increasing with dining and, I might say, more entertainment, you have a higher workforce coming in. If they are able to park, starting, let's say, a night restaurant shift, it's going to be about 4:00 PM, pay two hours, you're, you can use that parking space forever. But when it starts getting to be four hours, you're going to have to pay.
But if we differential permit, and we could give an employee permit, say, here are your streets, you get the orange ones right near where you work, then it's a cheap way of parking day after day, and they don't have to go to a meter.
But that's available to them now. That's what we're saying, is that right now, the town center permit is available, but people aren't using it. And if, we think that if you actually had people who could now, like, you know, employees that could now only have to pay for two hours of parking, they'd be even less likely to use the town center permit. So that's, that's what we're, that's our recommendation for that.
Man, did you.
This was extensive, and I have lots of questions, but I don't want to take up a whole lot of time. But I think a lot of my questions stemmed partially from what Kathy was saying. And my confusion, I was reading this entire report, is to the purpose for regulating parking in our town. Because it seemed like if our peak is at seven, The Economist and me, supply-demand says, we need to be regulating it at seven, we can't not be charging, yet all of our permitting, our town center permit stops at five, six, you know, is a daytime regulation. That includes residential, which doesn't seem to me to be a daytime regulation. Shouldn't residential be regulated at night and overnight, yet they can get a daytime permit? So I was confused throughout reading the whole thing, what the purpose of each of these were, because they seem to be conflicting. What's the purpose of our town center permit? Since it is only during, you know, daytime business hours, is there something that should be a town center permit for evening workers too? Or is there something that should be a town center permit for overnight when residents need to be parking? And none of these strategies really seem to address that evening worker near where they're working, taking up that spots that we want customers to be able to park in. So I'd love to hear you address, how do we address that? Does it include things like getting the town center permit, moving them off of the streets as permit parking and into the lots? Does it, is it even more expanded hours? I guess, I wasn't sure any of these strategies aimed for the exact same goal. And do we need to define that goal, or do we need to have multiple goals for parking? You know, that, that was my confusion over much of this, was all of that. I was concerned about license plate reader adoption and what that allows for monitoring. And who would have the ability to access those records? Would they become public records? Would the police be able to access them in criminal investigations? Would all of that? So addressing where regulations stand and where laws stand on the use of license plate readers and what happens to those records would be good. I was also concerned about your suggestion to actually eliminate meters. It might work if you're getting rid of a 15-minute, the first 15 minutes free. I know when I go to downtown and I'm only dropping books off of the library, I like the meters because I can just put a nickel in. I can't put a nickel into, I can't pay for just a nickel, six minutes of time to go drop off books at a kiosk or through Park Mobile. And so addressing that, you lose sort of those abilities at some of these mobile payment and online payment systems to be able to just pay for five minutes. Park Mobile requires a 30-minute minimum. Not everyone needs 30 minutes. So, so how do you address that ease of use and people who don't have phones or don't want to use phones when you're recommending getting rid of some of the quickest ways to feed, to pay for parking, which is feeding a meter with coin?
Please, go ahead.
I'll address the, for that last one. That's a decision that's made once they're installed. Any Park, any of the online applications, you choose from a municipality, how long, what the increments are allowed. So you can have a five-minute, you can have a 10-minute. Usually it's done for ease, to not confuse people. Any kiosk should be able to put any type of coin in that you can do in any meter. That's the kind of advantage of a kiosk, is that they can be programmed to accept, you know, a dime, a nickel, a quarter. You'd have to look into your specific technology, but there, most of them, that's the point of them, is that they accept credit card as well as different coins.
They, they accept them, but you have to know your license plate number, whereas a meter is just dump the dime in.
I would, yeah, that's, that is true. I think there's different ways, there's different advantages, I think, of each system. It's very, it's, if you're talking about budget, that also requires collection of individual money from someone at every single meter, which also adds. So I agree, there's a little bit less convenience in that sense. But I think what also happens is most people, after a few times, they've memorized their license plate, or they have it written down somewhere. So I think that's, that's something that I think does happen, so it, and I do think people are adjusting to it. That would be my answer to that. I just also know that meters can get very costly over time, because you're constantly reinstalling them, or you're fixing them. And that's one. But then the other one, I won't talk.
Sure, yeah. Thank you, Matt. Yeah. You know, I think there have now been two really good questions about the permit system, so I did want to talk a little bit more about that. You know, I think it's an interesting way that you sort of phrase this around the goals. It's a challenge, because there are multiple different types of users that need to make use of this permit. It's residents, it's daytime employees, it's nighttime employees. You know, we wanted to err on the side of not overcompromising, or, excuse me, overcomplicating this system from the way it stands now, but I think you brought up a lot of excellent future considerations. I would say that, you know, going to 5:00 PM, the way you have it now, at least our understanding, given sort of the land uses that you have, many of those evening shift restaurant employees, they're most likely starting at 4:00 PM, which would give them actually time to come in before that 5:00 PM cutoff to make sure they can get that permit space. So, you know, on that front, I think that it is working, to our understanding, for most of those evening employees. What we're finding is that they're not actually using it presumably, and that's why you're only 50% full in those spaces at 5:00 PM. So, but I agree that, you know, there are these multiple objectives trying to be handled by one permit system. To speak to the residents, you know, we didn't personally hear any comments, Matt, I don't know if you did, regarding residents being unable to park on those streets. So it seems as if for whichever residents may be using it, they don't seem to have any issues with it the way it's functioning now. So for that reason, I don't think we would recommend changing it on their behalf, although you're certainly correct in the sense that if this is a dedicated, you know, resident permit system, why wouldn't it be overnight? Why wouldn't it be securing those on-street spaces for them? But again, we didn't hear that as a comment. You know, I would also say, there's a possibility in the future to sort of split this out into multiple permits in the sense of employee permits versus resident permits. You could have different rates for those. You could have different regulations regarding how many people are, you know, how many permits you're allowed to get per household. You could have different time limits even for an employee versus resident. Again, we didn't want to jump to that now, because it doesn't feel necessary yet, but those are really good things to be thinking about now. Because as was also mentioned, the number of permits being sold is going up year over year. So while you're not hitting that, you know, danger zone yet, you certainly could be in, you know, several years, right? So that's an important thing to be thinking about. You know, I would say, in terms of converting, I believe there's a question about converting meters in the future to permits, that would be something we certainly wouldn't recommend yet, because...
The other direction.
The other direction.
You know, that it, the metered slots, the permitted slots become meter slots, so they weren't permanently designated. You know, if you had fewer, but they were for specific uses.
Yes, and, and that would certainly be possible. I think we would recommend, you know, implementing some of these recommendations and seeing sort of what that does. Does that shift a lot of the demand to the permits? Are those now very full, even at 7:00 PM? I would give it time to play out, but then that would be an option to consider. Again, that's why doing consistent quarterly utilization counts is important, because then you can compare how full are the permit spaces at this time versus how full are the meters? Is there an imbalance, and do we need to change that balance?
And I'll, I'll add one thing to what he said, too. For the town center permit, the one thing that is, that I would find consistency with it, is what it does is it offers employees particularly a long-term solution throughout the day that's not highly cost prohibitive, that which would make it harder for local businesses to hire people. So even though it stops at five, someone who's coming to work, say, at 9:00 AM, can now stay in that, that spot all day for that $25 annual permit, rather than paying, you know, a dollar per hour for some of the more expensive spaces or 50 cents. So it does give that. It also allows people to have a slightly different schedule to then work late, if they arrive before, then to be able to work later. I do think, once the idea of utilization counts, that's when you would really have to think about the permit strategy from where the resident versus the worker, and that gets to LPR. So LPR, what's really great about LPR is that what, you can also, there's many things you can do with it. You can use it for pure enforcement, but you can also use it just for data collection. And there are systems where what it does is it doesn't necessarily take the plate number, but it notices that, like, you don't get that information, but it notes that a car has been parked in a specific space at that time. So it actually, you can get almost instant utilization on a daily basis from that information. My understanding for that, I would have to look a little bit more into the, I would say, the finer-grained details of what you were asking. I think some of that's going to depend on the, the different laws, depending on where you are and what information is available. But that's something we can look into for you to make sure that those concerns are addressed, because I think that's very legitimate, you know? It's a concern.
Okay.
It's, it's about metered versus permit. They're separate now. Is there a reason they have to have separate dedicated sections, or could they be combined into you get a permit and you can park at any place that has a meter, you know, that is a pay area, and that would open up a whole lot?
Some are combined.
Steve?
Some, some are combined. The ones right out here are combined.
Northampton has them combined with a long-term meter that you could park, use your permit?
So I, I actually want to, in the interest of something my colleagues would like to obtain, and that is, we're not here at midnight. I'm going to ask whether there are specific things that you feel have not been addressed in the report at this time. Alyssa?
I have several, and I'm assuming you'll take notes, because I'm going to talk fast. But if they're already in the report, I apologize, but I've, I've felt that I didn't find them when I was in the report. I want to touch real briefly on the accuracy of information. I think there's so much good information here, but yet I'm worried when I find things like reference to the bid providing free parking. The bid doesn't provide any free parking. That's an absolute not factual statement. Just so to publish that in the report, I find really frustrating, because that's not the real story. And so I hope that that's an isolated case, just as when we're saying, we're not hearing from people familiar with the residence parking permit, which we almost never talk about. We only talk about what we think of as staff, and remembering that none of our staff have a dedicated spot for this building, for them to park in. They have to buy those spaces, but also staff for restaurants, but then also the residents, which we do tend to forget about. And we do have dual systems now, so to say. We're not suggesting you have dual systems. Well, we already have dual systems, so I'm just a little unclear as to where we're going with that in terms of being clear on things. In terms of the meter feeding, that's always been a pet peeve of mine, and in fact, town employees used to do it before, in the early days of the permit system, and that's one of the reasons we don't increase the price substantially. We're not UMass. We don't make people pay hundreds and hundreds of dollars to park to go to work. But at the same time, a little concerned about the fact that employee safety, because there are places, if we're asking people to park further out, where we consider ourselves a very safe town, and that's an amazing place that we've created here, but I'm not sure we necessarily want to expect people to walk several blocks in the dark. So there, I understand, it's complicated, but we have to remember that there's not always places for them to go, which is perhaps where we start talking about the idea, a permit also means you can use XYZ. It doesn't only mean you can use this. And similarly, as, as was stated just a moment ago, we do have sections that are both permit and meters, whereas it was stated earlier in the presentation that we don't. And we do, it's like less than a block from here. So we need to be clear that we're being accurate with that, because the public finds that frustrating when we get that wrong. Associated with the long-term lease, I think it needs to be clear that the reason we did that, one of the reasons we did that is one, nobody wanted to park down there. But one of the other reasons we did it is because there were people living downtown who wanted to be able to have a place to park their car overnight, that didn't otherwise have that. And so if you say, oh, well, now that space is up for grabs after six o'clock, where are they supposed to park their car overnight? So like, we've now taken away the purpose, a part of the purpose of why they're willing to pay that $1,000. So I'm fine with the fact that they're not using it, as long as we think we're charging them enough for it, so that they have a place to park their car overnight, whether it's so that they don't have to move it by 8:00 AM, or so that they have it during a snow emergency, although we've improved our snow emergency there. And then I guess the other thing is, if you have more information, I'm not asking you to do additional, but if you can just tweak some of the information. You gave us a whole big job description, and I nearly fell over looking at that, but I appreciate the concept of it, and we do have things very siloed right now, but we also have, there's a lot of other priorities in town. And so if you have a lot of information about how positions like that pay for themselves associated with this sort of work, that might be worth discussing. But just adding on an employee with a range of $50,000 to $100,000 a year to manage parking, giving all our other operations things, was interesting to look at, and I appreciate the not siloed nature of things. But we've got wonderful town employees now, and for over 10 years, they haven't figured out how to make better parking signs. So it's going to be really difficult to say, okay, well, if we just hire a person, that's their job amongst the other three pages of description. So insight you have into that would be really helpful, because as you said, you've worked with other communities.
We're sticking only to, what additional things do you want the report to address? Yes, Dorothy?
I'd just say a couple of things that are probably going to come up in our, our climate action plan that's coming to the town. And one is the possibility of having solar canopies over parking lots, and whether or not that would affect the amount of space for each car and so on. And what is the other thing? Oh, the other thing is that, you know, we're going to be transitioning to using electric cars over the next 10 years. cars over the next 10 years with companies, you know, stopping their production of internal combustion engine vehicles. And so, is, are we looking at that at all as far as like a comprehensive plan for parking and charging infrastructure?
Additional things for the report? I'd like to also make sure that we have time for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment at this time? Please, come forward, state your name. You're going to have to give up one seat at least. Have you all come back? Yes, thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Helping direct traffic in downtown.
Just real briefly, Barbara Pearson, I live in the center of town where those parking things are. But I see students parking and faculty parking in all of these places that, you know, because it is so expensive to park at UMass. So I think we have kind of a conflict that we want to make it too expensive for people to use our parking, and so they're not when they go to school. But we don't want to make it so expensive that people don't come and use our downtown. But I see, I see colleagues all the time who park on Lincoln and McClellan, and they come in, there are much more, there are many more cars in the winter time, in the summer, in the wintertime, because in the summertime, no students using those. Anyway, so those, that, when I think of parking in this downtown area, I mean, I'm sitting there saying, why don't I sell my driveway?
Thank you for your comment. Additional comments, please? Yes, please come forward.
Gabrielle Gould, Executive Director of the Downtown Amherst Bid. I wrote this while we were listening, so I don't ramble. While we appreciate the study and the work Nelson Nygaard has done, and we do not doubt their numbers, we still hear loudly from our small business owners, community members, and visitors that there is a very real parking perception issue in downtown Amherst. The study states that we are indeed at 86% capacity at times, and they acknowledge a 12% increase with the two major projects online, but it does not take into account several others as, sorry, several other projects coming soon. The cinema desires to add four new screens, the library's intention to expand, as well as the bid's desire to raise funds, build program and maintain a performing art shell on the common. We have heard from the businesses that when programming is on the common, it adds greatly to their upset and concern that there is no parking. We feel that a parking garage is a strong solution to the issue and have sourced an opportunity for private funding for the capital. As well, as well, we are in the process of creating a 501(c)(3) foundation that would manage this garage. We intend to start the conversation with the council and the town in the hopes that we can bring this initiative to fruition while requiring no municipal funds or management cost to the town. We also want to point out that this is one of Nelson Nygaard's strategy recommendations and Solution A B.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other public comments at this time? This is just the beginning of our conversation on parking, okay? So, and believe me, it will not go away. If nothing else, we have to take it to our district meetings where that's all they want to talk about. So, thank you very much, Christine, your committee, Jeff, all of your work, and to our consultants. Thank you. Do you need a break at this time? Five minutes.
Public Way. This is a public way request.
It is, yes.
Okay, and you're going to give us a little background and how we got here, and thank you.
Great, so some years ago, pleased to be here, by the way, to talk about this project. I'm pinch ending a bit for one of my staff members, Nate Malloy, and I want to give Nate, and of course, the Historical Commission, all the credit in the world for moving this project forward. Some years ago, the town developed the Amherst Literary Trails. We have 14 literary trails honoring those writers and poets in our community who brought so much rich history to us. And more recently, the Historical Commission decided to move forward with a writer's walk honoring 12 writers, poets, and some wonderful people who have lived in our community. And so, before you, you have a couple of documents. Nate was kind enough to put together a memo outlining the project, the history of the project. There is a Google map view of each of the sites. The signs will actually go in front of, or in the public way next to, the house that the individual or the pair of individuals lived in. There is a draft sign for each of the 12 writers who will be honored, or pairs of writers who will be honored. And then there's a cut sheet showing, and that's the one that we have up on the board right now, showing generally how the sign will be displayed near the sidewalk or out in front of the house that has been designated. Tonight, before you, I just want to read from the memo. Town staff and the Historical Commission request that the town council, as keepers of the public way, approve the locations for installing 12 writer's walk signs within the right-of-way. And the idea for the writer's walks signs, as I said, came through the Historical Commission. It's been quite a while in development. It was funded with CPA dollars, and the Historical Commission chose 12 of the more noteworthy historical authors who lived in Amherst. Formerly, so town meeting approved Community Preservation Act funds in 2010, and here we are, fast forward to 2019, and we are ready to create and fabricate the signs and install them. So I'm here before you tonight to ask for your authorization to install them in the public way. And I'm happy to take questions. Let me just check my notes. I want to also confirm that the sign locations and the sign design, of course, as I said, originated with the Historical Commission. We hired a wonderful local designer, Seth Gregory, out of Northampton, to design the signs. And then the DRB and the DPW has thoroughly reviewed the locations and the sign design themselves and installation, and recommended those to you tonight through Nate's memo. So I think I will stop there. We can walk through slides. I think the locations, if maybe Athena could move to one of the first actual images of, if you keep going, one of the actual images of the sign. I think it's most helpful to see on the signs the locations, if you keep going, Athena, because there are a dozen of those. Actually, maybe the next file. Yep, sorry, there we go. So each one of the signs includes some biographical information about the history of the individual or the pair of individuals in town. And then I think what is most interesting and important for you all is to see where the signs will be installed, 1 through 12. And each one of the signs includes a map of where they are in town. We are, I talked to Mr. Bachman earlier today. We are going to do a little more research with Nate and the Historical Commission on the reference at the bottom, amhersthistoric.org. We, I think, the request before you is for installation of these signs in the public way. Ultimately, the town manager has the final say on working with the Historical Commission what goes on the signs. So I think we do have a couple of questions about, kind of, should the footer include more information about referencing back to the town? So we're going to work on that a little bit. I think I'll stop there.
So we do have a motion before us, but I, we should stop for the moment and have questions. Mandy Jo.
I just have one quick one. Most of these signs are in downtown. It's meant to be walked on, but there's two that are not, that you'd have to essentially drive to. My concern is, is there enough pull-off space where those signs were, especially the Belcher Town Road one? I'm not as concerned with Market Hill. But the Belcher Town Road one, if someone wanted to stop and read that sign, is there going to be enough space for a car to pull off safely, get out of the car, read the sign, and get back in?
I don't have the answer to that tonight. I'm happy to get it. I presume the DPW and DRB looked at that with staff, but I don't know the answer to that. I'm happy to go back and get the answer to that.
Steve.
So I think it's a great project, and I've enjoyed the map, but I have a couple of content, maybe one or two content questions. So one of the people is still living and doesn't live in that house anymore, so why that particular house? And then, how do we expand on this? There's no shortage of amazing writers in Amherst, so we're stopping at 12, but these signs will be presumably around for a while, so are we limiting ourselves by having other writer's walk destinations, or should we leave that, maybe put that in LED or something so we can keep changing it?
So I think content and design questions, I can take back to the Historical Commission. I think those are all good. I presume that the Historical Commission spent a lot of time thinking about that. They wanted to get something done. We have struggled with some of these historic preservation and historic education projects to actually get product out there. And this is some older CPA dollars, so I think we certainly wanted to move something forward. I think the question is, can this be expanded upon in the future beyond a dozen? And I think that's a fair question. And if the maps are on the signs themselves, does that limit us in the future?
Additional questions?
I'm happy to bring that back through staff to the Historical Commission. I think tonight, I'm looking for particularly information about, or feedback on locations. And I think that one question I had was whether the council felt that this was a large enough or complex enough project to refer to CRC, as you have done with other right-of-way requests, or is this something the council can address tonight?
Michelle, any?
Oh, I think this is, I mean, all of us think it's a great idea. What I would love to see happen is, or, I'm sorry. The question is, is this somehow being publicized on the town website or other places? Because it would be great for residents to know that something like this exists, and then for tourists also, when they come, this could be an attraction.
Well, I think that is part of the plan. Once they're fabricated, DPW is going to install them. They're fairly easy installation. So once they're, you know, installed, or we anticipate an installation date, then we would publicize them through our town website and other local social media outlets.
Additional questions? All right, so, yes, Dorothy.
Darcy.
Darcy. Sorry, I am so sorry.
So I think this is a fantastic idea, and I'm just wondering if there's any reason why we shouldn't make a motion and have a vote tonight.
Okay. Okay, so the motion before us is to authorize the town manager to install historic interpretive writer's walk signs in the approximate style and content that are of similar scale and design, as shown on the A, this is in your packet, Wayfinder Systems fabrication specs, May 2018, prepared by Seth Gregory Design. B, Amherst Historic Wayfinding Panels proof, July 29, 2019, prepared by Seth Gregory Design. And the approximate locations in the right-of-way shown on C, Writer's Walk Sign Locations, 040119 PDF, and in the right-of-way at the approximate locations associated with the following properties. And I'm not going to read them, because they are listed up there, starting with 118 Sunset Avenue and going all the way through to 170 Market Hill Road. Is there a second? Okay, Shalini's a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Yes, Dorothy.
I think the question about, again, they're all going to be listed on the signs, and how do we, are we absolutely sure that this is the definitive moment? And I guess I'd feel better if we had, maybe they were publicized on the town website, and people were asked, have we, is there, have we forgotten somebody? Do you have any nominations? And then the Historical Committee could look and weigh and see how they fit in, but I just, there's so many people that know so many things in town, and they haven't had a chance to comment. And they're going to be put up, and it's going to be limited to these 12.
Pat, speak.
It does seem to me that we should start with this group of people, and if there are additional writers that come up, they could be added. I don't see that as a problematic situation.
We could have Walk A and Walk B.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, Steve.
Yeah, so I still think, I'm a little concerned about the fact that one is living and all the rest are...
Not.
Yeah, so. If this were historical writers, meaning from the past, then that would be, that means that they're no longer productive. So that would be a way of defining who's on the list and who's not on the list. But if we include the living, then the list gets much longer.
Steve, yes, I'm sorry, David.
So I'm happy, I've listed the questions or concerns, and I'm happy to take. I have five pull-offs, the safety of the pull-offs that are not in downtown, how to expand the science system beyond 12, and then therefore the maps, dating, maybe it's Phase 1, maybe it's Part A, Part B, how to publicize, which I think is fairly straightforward, refine at the bottom the reference material and the reference to the town website, and then the question about one of the individuals still being living and the other 11 not. So I'm happy to take those back to the Historical Commission. I guess my hope is that we could still proceed with the approval of these 12, and I'd be happy to have Nate Malloy work those questions back through the Historical Commission and bring that information to you as an FYI at a future meeting or through your packet.
Okay, Alyssa.
One thing I'd just like to see is, not for this particular go-around, but as we move into the budget season, we need to build in maintenance money for this. We have failed on that repeatedly with every other wayfinding system we've had, and we've just let them rust away to nothing. And so, they're going to look beautiful for a while, and we'll forget. And so we need to have a place that we start managing that as we add in new projects. What does that look like? Because we don't have that right now, and so for budget season, this will come up.
Maybe this is a request for CPA money, to refresh our historic signs.
General maintenance.
General maintenance, okay. We don't need to debate that. Yes, Evan.
Right, so I think you've gotten a lot of content feedback, which was not the purpose of this. You're questioning, you had questions really about locations, and so there are two things. I don't know how accurate these little drawings are, as to where these things will go, but if you're looking for actual location feedback, the one at 30 Boltwood that seems to be sort of just like in the middle of the sidewalk, seems strange to me. I'm not, it seems like it could be more of an obstacle than anything else. And then the other one that sort of relates to potential maintenance is 118 Sunset Ave, which is a fraternity house. And if there's any concerns about putting one of these lovely signs in front of a fraternity house, I have many students who are part of that fraternity, they're lovely people, but I would, I'll leave it at that.
Are there other questions or issues that we would like David to take back to the Historic Commission? Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further comment? Then I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Opposed, abstained? It's 13 ayes and no opposition, and no abstention.
Thank you very much. I will take all these questions back through staff to the Historical Commission, and then again, work through Paul, because ultimately, the motion authorizes the town manager to the final sites and the actual wording of all the signs. And I will, just a quick note, somebody had mentioned wayfinding. This is, this follows the general family of signs that were designed by Seth Gregory for wayfinding. We hope to be back before you in a couple of meetings with a similar request for the wayfinding signs, not unlike, but somewhat different than the wayfinding sign that went up in the roundabout at Triangle Street.
Great, thank you.
So we're moving forward on that long-anticipated project as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we're going to move on to item 7B, Policy on the Publication of Candidate Statements. And this is coming out of GOL, so Mandy Jo and your committee.
Thank you. I first want to apologize for presenting two different policies to you tonight. We're going to go through the reasons for two different policies with the slides and all. GOL met almost two weeks ago to vote in favor of adoption, recommending adoption of the policy on publication of candidate statements. We actually changed it from our first presentation slightly, and then, when we changed it, we sent it on to the town manager, who sent it on to the clerk, the IT department, and other relevant individuals, and they came back with some of our changes would not be ADA compliant. So that's why there are a couple of, two different policies. So let's go through the changes. So the first change is to the title, fairly basic. That's the same in both presentations of this policy that are presented tonight. The second change was to the hyperlink for a candidate statement. And in response to the council's request, we at GOL changed that to a text-only URL that would not be hyperlinked, so that someone would actually have to cut and paste that into a browser to be able to get to the page. We got reports from IT that that is not ADA compliant, and that for ADA purposes, if you're going to provide a URL, the URL should be clickable. So that is why in the second one down here, that has the highlighted language on it, so that was done after GOL met, and GOL has not had a meeting since. So I went back and then proposed this highlighted second option for candidate statements, which would then make this ADA compliant. Part of the changes to it include some of the talk I had with the IT department, Brianna Sunrid, and our clerk of the council, about how these pages might look, since we're going to have to put them up very soon, since the election's coming up. So that's the reason this number 2, from what GOL has recommended, to essentially going back to what was first presented to you two weeks ago, an active clickable hyperlink is there, to comply with the ADA, which is something we are trying to do on our webpage. Can we get the next slide? So the next one is the, the how you submit statements. GOL was not going to change this paragraph 6. All they were going to do in 13, which is the same in both policies presented in paragraph 13, was to make sure that URL was handed out at the time someone pulled papers, as requested at our last council meeting. So we did make that change in paragraph 13. That's the same in both policies presented tonight. Number 6, though, when we were talking about potential ways this could be presented on a website and how people could submit, IT came up with the idea of having them be able to submit, instead of a form, a fillable PDF. And so, item number 6 attempts to give the clerk sort of more options on how to accept electronic means, so that someone could maybe download the PDF and then email it back to the clerk, if the clerk's willing to do it that way. It was my way of attempting to minimize the changes to number 6, depending on what this council wanted, that would still make, if it's a fillable PDF that they want, it comply with number 6, instead of having hugely rewriting number 6. Because number 6, it was hard with a PDF on how it was written, to do that way. So this was my attempt at coming up with language that if the council likes the idea of a fillable PDF, or if the town IT goes forward with a PDF fillable, that they could submit, that this would allow for that modification, essentially generalizing the submission issue even more. So that's those changes. The next slide. Number 11, when GOL went through it, we didn't reread the disclaimer. And so, GOL recommended a policy that had some outdated disclaimer language, which is the webpage hyperlink through the candidate's name. When GOL changed to no text, no hyperlinks, that was outdated. So that's one of the changes there. The bottom change ensure, the deletion of ensure that the disclaimer is visible at all times. IT cannot right now guarantee that is doable, while also making the page easily readable on an ADA-type reader, a sound reader or something. The way they talked about having to do it was that they'd have to paste it many different times in the page, and therefore it would become very hard for someone using a screen reader to actually read the page if it's done that way. So that's why the changes I'm proposing beyond what GOL proposed got rid of just that pay, that clause, but still requires maximum visibility. The other part is to not require the disclaimer exactly how it's written every time, so that it can be modified per wherever it shows up. Because sometimes it might show up next to a statement, other times it might show up on a page that doesn't have statements. And so this hopefully would allow for modifications of it to make it sound more reasonable where and logical, depending on where it shows up. And then the last page here is the modified dates that GOL did agree to propose for tonight as part of the motion for, if this is adopted, when things would happen, because we know that some of those dates have already passed. So these are the new dates for this election only that we are proposing per the motion. And then, Athena, you have a different one. If we can get that one up. I had asked, while I had the meeting with them, I thought it would be wonderful if they could provide some screenshots of a potential, what these might look like, and what we were talking about, so you can relate what the changes on the policy are to how this would look. So this one here is an idea IT had to utilize that fillable PDF in a way that would make it easy for IT, but also clear for everyone. And so, instead of one long page that has all the candidate statements on it, if you can use a fillable PDF, then you have a candidate statement page that can just list each candidate's name. And then, when you click on the candidate's name, you get the fillable PDF that they submitted. And this is the second one here. This is a mock-up of what the PDF might look like. That would then, when they submit it, be converted or produced exactly as submitted. If someone submits it in writing, by hand, you could just scan it, it would look the same, even if they hand-wrote it versus someone. It wouldn't be two sort of separate looks, maybe, that you could get if you had a different type of form being submitted by a candidate. So this is sort of a proposal that was thought of as a way to do this. That might be the page that you see on the town webpage, which means there'd be less direct linking to it being on a town page, as the council was concerned about statements that might be inflammatory, that we can't censor because of free speech issues. This, using a fillable PDF that has no town markings on it, would again remove by one step further, sort of linking to the town of Amherst, which, in talking to IT and Athena and my relating to them, council's concerns at last meeting, this was one of the ideas we had to do that. The link would still be, on this one would be active, but it wouldn't be direct, you know, it would be from a PDF, still hosted on the town servers, but still from a PDF instead of from something else. So those are the ideas. The goal is to have them send a URL to a fillable PDF or another form out tomorrow, so hopefully we can pass something tonight. I did present the two policies for utmost transparency. GOL did not have a chance to meet, to discuss the changes that are proposed in the ones that says Hanukkah proposed, so I cannot say that GOL themselves recommends that one, but that one is the one that is attempting to comply with ADA compliance, based on what IT has told me.
Okay, so, the motion regarding all of this is to approve the policy on the publication of candidate statements on the town bulletin board in accordance with Charter Section 7.6, recommended by the Governance Organization and Legislation Committee Report dated September 18th, 2019, as presented and further to modify the deadlines in said policy for the purposes of the 2019 local town election only as follows. The town clerk shall email the URL for submitting candidate statements to all individuals who filed nomination papers no later than 5:00 PM on September 24th, 2019. The deadline to submit candidate statements for the inclusion in the first publishing of the statements by the town shall be 5:00 PM on October 7th, 2019. And the town shall publish candidate statements submitted by the October 7th deadline no later than 5:00 PM on October 10th, 2019. I have to say, I believe I should have said, should have read this as amended, not as presented. Correct?
That was what I didn't know how to draft the motion. I think we need clarity by the council on which of the two presented tonight they would like to adopt, if it is the one that is labeled with additional changes, I think is what the title is. The motion should reflect that it's that one.
Could we go back to the beginning? Thank you.
There's one labeled proposed additional changes, and then one just labeled GOL revisions. If it's the proposed additional changes, the motion should reflect that it's that one being adopted tonight.
And this includes...
Oh, that's the wrong one.
Yes, okay. This includes everything that GOL did, and then includes recommended changes by Mandy Jo, based on her conversations with IT, and most of which reflect the issue of ADA compliance.
Yes, the only change from GOL, that GOL recommended that is being reversed is this one shown on this slide here, the paragraph number 2. Everything else would be in addition to what GOL recommended, reversed from the policy GOL approved for recommendation. Because the policy GOL approved was a text-only URL, my recommendation for ADA compliance is to go back to a hyperlinked URL.
Okay, are there questions? Yes, Dorothy.
So I know we need to do this, because the calendar's running out. On the other hand, I hate to pass something that a committee hasn't had a chance to vote on, so why don't we just ask the committee members of GOL if what Mandy Jo did is acceptable before we vote?
Okay. I think that's actually a decent suggestion. We have Steve, we have George, we have Pat, we have Mandy Jo, and we have Evan. Questions? Questions, George? Evan? Yes?
So I'm, there seem to be two changes in at least application from what GOL envisioned, but I'm not, I'm trying to wrap my head around, it doesn't seem like... but I'm, I'm not, I'm trying to wrap my head around, it doesn't seem like the second is in the rule. So the, the change that's actually in, sorry, not the rule, the policy is, has to do with the URL, that, that hyperlink. One thing that has changed is in the application of this policy, the conversations GOL had was around the idea of having an online form similar to what people submitted for the town manager. Now there's been a conversation about a fillable PDF, which of course doesn't appear in the policy itself and so technically is not a change to the policy beyond what GOL talked about, but in how this policy is going to be applied is a change. And so, to reflect that is just this one statement, the town clerk, blah, 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 makes up candidate's statements by other electronic means. Is, is the thought here, because I care about the wording of the policy, but I also care about what they're going to do with it after, that there will be only a fillable PDF that is sent out and if they want, there'll be a hard copy? Or is there still going to be the electronic form that we originally envisioned, but also an optional fillable PDF?
So, my understanding is if, if the fillable PDF is acceptable to the council, the way IT would like to be able to do it is to have it then emailed to the clerk and IT directly, not to have, to them have to upload it to the website. Now, it is possible under the way GOL envisioned this that, you know, and, and they would be able to then directly email that fillable PDF to the candidates tomorrow instead of having to send them a link to a download. But you could, under the proposed policy, send all the candidates an actual URL where they would download the fillable PDF and then they could then re-upload that by submitting a form. This would allow them to do it a little bit more efficiently and I think Athena wants to address that too.
Could you please flip to the page that we're referring to? Okay.
The fillable PDF option was another way around some words that we're not able to publish on the website. So if we had a form that was, that candidates were filling out on the website, there were some words that they could not type in and submit that way. So a fillable PDF was our way around that and going a lot of, through a lot of back and forth with the town clerk's office and candidates and figuring out how to deal with those kinds of free speech issues.
Okay. Evan, yes?
Just a follow-up, and this is my limited knowledge of fillable PDFs. Is it possible to impose a character count on a fillable PDF that stops them?
The example that we have up has a character limit, so if you were to try and type in more than 900 characters, you couldn't, it would cut you off. And I'm sorry, one other thing. We would be typing in a candidate's statement that was submitted handwritten so that it would be ADA compliant and a reader could read it off the website. I know that's not ideal, but in order to make sure that they're all readable by an e-reader, that's what we would do.
I'm just going to stay with the GOL committee themselves. Questions about the amendments? Okay, so you're, are you okay with the questions on the amendments?
With those answers, yes.
Okay. So then, the, back to the council. So then, the statement that I read earlier says, dated September 18th, 2019, as amended and further, yes, I'm sorry, is that correct? And further to modify.
I would say with the proposed additional changes.
Okay.
It's what the title of the document is.
Do you have the amendment in front of you? Here.
So, I have...
Okay. Okay. So why don't, why don't you read the motion the way it should read now?
So, to approve the quote, "policy on the publication of candidate's statements on the town bulletin board in accordance with Charter Section 7.6, recommended by the Governance Organization and Legislation Committee Report dated September 18th, 2019, and as amended in accordance with the document titled..." Do I have to read the title, Athena? Can you get the right title? The one that has the "and proposed additional changes" on it. "And further to modify the deadlines in said policies for the purposes of the 2019 local town election only as follows," and none of that after that changes from what was previously read.
Okay. So the motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second, no.
Okay. Any further questions at this time? Are you okay with the motion? Okay. Then all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, and abstain, and it's 13 in favor and no, no opposition, no abstentions. And let me just also say, we'll have an opportunity after this election to evaluate how it went. Great. Thank you. I just want to quickly ask a question in relationship to the rules. Rule 18, Rule 8 relating to proclamations, resolutions, commemorations, and citations. Would there be any problem with us delaying this for, until our next meeting?
No.
I'd like to do that in the interest of time. We're moving on to appointments. Item eight. And this is a town manager appointment and it has been reviewed by OCA. And so Evan?
Keep this short. OCA reviewed the town manager appointments to the registrar of voters at its meeting this morning and voted unanimously to recommend the town council approve the town managers' appointments.
Okay. Is there a motion? No. Why don't you make it as a motion, please?
Sure. So I move to approve the following town manager appointments to the Board of Registars or Voters effective immediately as recommended by Outreach Communications and Appointments Committee Verbal Report of September 23rd, 2019 for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2022. Demetria Shabaz for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2021. Jaclyn Gardner.
Is there a second?
Second.
George made the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? 13 in favor and I believe that was a very important one because we needed to get to a majority on the Board of Registars. Thank you. Okay. We are moving on to committee reports. Audit Committee. Bylaw Review.
We'll have the final version ready for the council's first read on November 1st. By November 1st.
And that will take two readings, so we'll have to figure out how we're going to schedule that. We only have one meeting in November at this time. Okay. Community Resource Committee.
We're, we haven't met since the last meeting. We're meeting this Wednesday.
Okay. Council Ad-Hoc Goals. We're going to have an item regarding that later. There was no meeting since then. Finance Committee.
Other than that, we're meeting tomorrow, which I think has already been reported. I think that's all to say.
Okay. GOL, any additional items?
Nope. We just keep continuing to bring stuff to you.
Thank you. OCA?
Lucky you getting through your committee report so fast. I'm here to ruin that. So, so, not completely. So, OCA provided a written report in your packet that we're assuming you all read. So having gone through the first round of town council appointments for ZBA, Planning Board, and Finance Committee, OCA is now going through the process of looking at and reconsidering the process that was used this past spring in stages. And the first conversation we had was around the community activity forms. And one of the things we identified going through that process was several problems with having one community activity form that covers both town manager appointments and town council appointments. Those problems I don't have to repeat because they're detailed in the report. And so, OCA voted at our September 9th meeting to recommend that the town council vote to separate out CAFs for Finance Committee, Planning Board, and Zoning Board of Appeals to create a separate CAF that for the time being would be identical to the current one, but that applicants to those three committees would fill out a separate CAF than applicants to other committees and that that CAF would then be automatically distributed to all town councillors upon submission. This is not up for a vote tonight because we wanted to present it to you and have you have an opportunity to digest the information in the report and also ask the committee any questions, but I do believe it will be on the agenda for October 7th.
Yes, it will.
So if there are any questions about this decision, I, I would be happy to field them.
Kathy?
Just a quick one. Is the idea of a separate report, is you might ask additional information or ask it in a different way?
Yes, so, OCA had a, I think, a really rich conversation about what we thought about the CAFs, deficiencies in information, how they might be more useful and perhaps some potential revisions. We're not recommending any yet, but the thought is that at some point, OCA will come forward to the council with some recommended revisions to the CAF. And one of the reasons for doing this, there are several, but one of them is we felt as if the CAF for town council appointments were separate, then we have complete control over the content of them and we can recommend revisions and then the town council can accept or reject those revisions. But there's no need to have a conversation, say with the town manager, to say, well, we want this on the CAFs and the town manager says, well, I don't want that on the CAFs because they will be CAFs for town council committees.
Are there additional questions on this issue at this time? Okay, then we'll look forward to a proposal that we will vote on on October 7th. Present for Art Bylaw, Ad-Hoc Committee, Kathy, who is now the chair of this committee.
We had our first meeting today, which was to go, we primarily went over the original town version of the bylaw and started a discussion about areas that we would want to have a further discussion about and, and had a little bit of a briefing by Sonia on what could and couldn't be done with the way the town needs to track financial accounts and allocations every year and the issues that came up with legislature. We will be meeting again on October 8th and on October 22nd, so those will be posted to extend anyone wants to come and hear. This, it was a pretty good initial discussion and we ended on time.
We're going to move on to the approval of minutes. We have four sets of minutes for September 5th, September 9th, September 17th for the 5:30 PM meeting, which was a meeting of the council, and September 17th, which was a 6 o'clock meeting, actually didn't start till about 6:15 or so, and that was jointly with the school committee. Are there questions on any of these minutes? Yes. Shalani?
I'm sorry, I didn't send the recommended changes early, so can I point them out now? Yes?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Let's go by the individual dates.
Yes.
September 5th?
Yeah. September 5th, there were two comments that I would like added, that I'd made. The first one was my inquiry about grants for net zero schools and libraries. Is anyone looking into grants for net zero schools and libraries? That was number one, comment number one.
Athena, hold on. Did you find that? Okay. Yes.
And the second is when buying assets, a process should include cost of maintenance of those assets. So that was a comment I had made.
Okay. Athena? All right? Any further changes to...
Not to this one.
September 9th?
No. The 17th one.
17?
So the 17th one, I wanted the comment added about, according to the pilot study report for electric buses in Amherst, Cambridge, and Concord, the actual energy use and cost of maintenance was higher than expected. There were other factors in the report like training, the bus drivers, that require a plan to systematically switch over to electric buses. And this is, this was the report that helped me make my decision to go ahead with the current purchase.
Okay. Athena, you've got that? Any further changes? September 17th, the 6 o'clock meeting. Are there any further changes? So, the motion reads to approve the September 5th minutes as amended, the September 9th minutes, the 7th, September 17th, 2019, 5:30 PM minutes as amended, and the September 17th, 2019, 6:00 PM town council minutes as presented. Okay? Yes? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions? All those in favor, raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's 10 in favor, no opposition, three abstentions. I believe we're up to the town manager's report.
Just a few things that I wanted to mention tonight. The cup of joe, we are crowdsourcing our next guest, so if anybody's interested in inviting, inviting someone, they can email or tweet at the Amherst Twitter account and we're sort of going to be looking, taking suggestions. I want to highlight a couple of things for the public especially. The town hall front door, I don't think I reported on this last time, but the entire front door structure, not just the doors, but the wood surround as well, will be removed during the next few months, totally rehabilitated and then replaced. This is because that entire structure is starting to deteriorate so badly that the building inspector felt that it was becoming a real issue. We looked at just doing the doors, but that was not going to be adequate because they're all so tied together. These are historic doors tied to the original building and so we want to do it right. There is, there are funds available set aside for this type of work that we have for building maintenance in general and we're going to dedicate the money for this building for that purpose. In its stead, there will be a plywood surround with ADA-accessible doors in its place and that will, they will be there for a few months, so it's going to look ugly for a while. It'll look, we'll make it look as good as we can, but when they come back, the doors will be more easily opened and closed. There'll be better hardware on the doors, so right now we have a lot of people who have a difficult time opening the doors because they're so big and heavy and so we're looking at ways to make that easier for folks. So people will see a big difference in town hall going forward. We surprised OCA this morning with, with minutes takers being present and we have hired a couple of minutes takers and the school, school committee has minutes takers and they're very happy with their minutes takers. We're looking forward to having this so you don't have to be worried about minutes anymore. And I think Athena's done a tremendous job of sorting through all the applicants and interviewing people and meshing all their schedules and I think you have, she has almost all the meetings through the end of the calendar year accounted for except for a couple, so she's done a tremendous job of making sure everything is covered, so, yeah.
I'll allow you to clap.
The, just want to mention, the Bid Block Party was a real success for both the business improvement district, but also for the town. Not only the councillors had a prime location, it was really well-attended, really well-received, but also the senior center had a really interesting Ask an Elder booth that was incredibly popular. Rank choice voting had a presence, the inspection, inspection services, the community participation officers, and the Energy, Climate, and Action Committee were all, had a presence in front of the fire station and that was really well-received. It was a beautiful night, everybody was in good humor, so it was a real great success. Kendrick Park, we had put in a grant for a playground, a play structure of some sort at Kendrick Park. We're hoping to hear from that in the very near future, so I'm really hopeful for that. So that's, I'm going to stop there given that I know you have an executive session coming up as well.
Okay. Under Town Councillor Comments, are there any questions, I'm sorry, of the town manager? I know there's lots of questions of the town manager, but about his report. Yes, Andy?
Just real quick, did the building inspector have any... Just real quick, did the building inspector have any opinion about the condition of the steps leading to the front door in town hall?
So we have had those looked at, and they are in difficult shape. The cost of doing those was significantly higher than the money we had available, and we are going to be hiring an architect to actually do the, redo those steps. It's going to be a very expensive project, and unfortunately, so that one isn't going to get done this year.
Any other questions? Town Council Reports. I, I just, for the purposes of the public and so forth, just to summarize the retreat, and just to mention what we talked about. We talked about councillors' top priorities over the next two years and three months. We talked about the relationship of the goals to the town manager's goals and the budget guidelines. We talked about liaisons and members, and how liaisons are to work and appointment, and that has now been referred to OCA. We talked about communicating with the town manager, town staff, and the town attorney, and we talked about how we can achieve our goal of ending council meetings by 10 PM. And finally, we agreed that we would do a retreat, for which I will poll sometime in November or early, I will poll before this, but the retreat will be either in November or early December. Are there, and we passed out the seven-page list of agenda items with the future agenda items, and I will be asking councillors to individually review those agenda items and prioritize or add to them. And are there any other future agenda items at this time? Any other councillor comments? Mandy Jo?
I just wanted to, as I, we did it at the retreat, and then the Nelson Nygaard report said it, we did little dots for stuff. And then in the Nelson Nygaard report for parking, I saw one of their forums, they did dots on who likes this, who likes that, and I was thinking, something like that, that requires someone to go to a meeting, they had like 30 people there, if we could plan ahead and get those charts to the block party or the first day, that would be fantastic, where so many more people could walk up to that chart and say, hey, my priority for parking is this, or this, and then we'd have a lot more information. So I just wanted to give that as a suggestion for us as councillors, but also for town staff. If we've got charts like that, even if it's a little late, it could be something that could be useful at block parties and other large town events like that.
Let me also thank GOL, no, OCA, particularly Alyssa, and Evan, and Sarah, and George, and I'm missing, Darcy, for your work in putting together our very popular table at the bid, and for the jars, we're getting the summary of those, but we've already gotten the summary of people who put their stickers up on the pad as well. So it was really, many people commented on how glad they were to see councillors there. Yes, Alyssa?
I just wanted to build on the compliments, because I think we need to take more credit for the immense amount of work that we do as part-time elected officials, and I wanted to mention specifically, the video links on the forum agenda for tonight, I think were incredibly useful to people. It was so good to be able to tell people, look, it says right here, go watch this presentation. That's so helpful, to be able to do that, and specifically, even more so on the volunteer part of things, because yes, we get paid, but seriously, is that GOL deserves props, since I went after that other committee at a previous meeting. GOL has been doing an amazing job at laying out, this is what we said, this is what we changed, this is what I thought about later, and putting all those things really clearly for us, and being able to get that information to us ahead of time. It's an immense amount of work for those of you who aren't on GOL or weren't on rules, and I'm just really appreciative of how much effort goes into that, and how much easier it makes our task when we see things like that. And I hope that staff, to a degree, follows your lead on that, because it's incredibly useful, so thank you.
Thank you. And also to thank Athena for all of her hard work in helping to put together our retreat. You know, Paul lugged a few things, David helped him, but Athena made sure we had all the copies, the big sheets, and all the other stuff. Right? All right. There are two topics not reasonably anticipated. I regret that I just did not get my appointment in for the CRC until this morning, and that is to appoint Mandy Jo Hanke to the opening on CRC. And then the other one is, coming out of our retreat, because we do not take actions at the retreat, we actually would like to, we've looked at how to do this the best way. We would like the following motion, to amend the measure adopted on March 4, 2019, that stated to form an ad hoc committee to assist the president in establishing council goals, to now state to create an ad hoc committee for the purpose of developing town manager and council goals for review and adoption by the town council. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Yes, Darcy.
I know Alyssa brought this up at the retreat, but how, how does that work with OCA's charge to be involved in the town manager evaluation?
The, this is not to do the evaluation, this is to set the goals.
Right.
And then the evaluation, this last year, I came to OCA, I talked to you about it, we implemented, I spent a lot of time with Alyssa on it, but that was not OCA. As we move to reforming how to do the evaluation, then we can clarify the role of OCA in that.
So this is to sort of integrate the council goals and the town manager goals?
It's really to set up goals for the town manager, keeping in mind the priorities that we all talked about, and taking those, and also creating at least some first goals coming out of that. That's the way I understood what you wanted coming out of the retreat. Further questions, Darcy? Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor say aye, and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Darcy abstains? Okay. 12, 4, 0 opposed, 1 abstention. I will then be polling you also for your interest in that committee. Right now, there are six people who have been serving on the Goals Committee, but I want to reassess that to see whether or not those people want to remain, or are there other people, given the change in the motion, that would like to now serve on it? Okay? All right. I now need to take a roll call vote. It's to move that the town council meet an executive session for the purpose pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, C. 30A, Section 21A7, to approve the executive session minutes of June 17, 2019, August 19, 2019, August 26, 2019, and to release the executive session minutes of January 28, 2019, April 22, 2019, June 17, 2019, August 19, 2019, and August 26, 2019. The council will not reconvene an open session. I need a roll call.
Second.
Councillor Baumel?
Yes.
Councillor Brewer?
Yes.
Councillor De Angelis?
Yes.
Councillor Dumont?
Yes.
President Griesmer?
Yes.
Councillor Hanke?
Yes.
Councillor Pan?
Yes.
Councillor Ross?
Yes.
Councillor Ryan?
Yes.
Councillor Shane?
Yes.
Councillor Schreber?
Yes.
Councillor Steinberg?
Yes.
Councillor Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the record shows that the council entered into executive session at 9:54.